Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Pastor Bob Irish to lead us in a moment of reflection. Thank you.
Good morning. As a pastor of a Christian church in this city, Ventura, I'd like to offer a prayer. I God in heaven, I pray this morning, thanking you, Lord, that we get to live in such a beautiful area of your creation. And what I pray for these men and women who are the supervisors over this county. And I pray this morning, Lord, that you would grant to them wisdom and clear direction that your will for this county will be established here. So God bless this meeting today and give divine wisdom, I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Supervisor Finn, would you lead us in the prayers?
......................................................
The minutes of July 13th have been moved and seconded. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries. We're at agenda review. Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good news, we have but one minor change in the agenda, and that's item 26 has a second revision to the letter that had come in there. And you received that this morning.
Good. All right. Supervisors, anything on the agenda?
I'd like to pull item 16, just so it can be voted on separately.
Okay. Item 16 to be voted on separately. Okay. We have, so that's polled. All righty. And we have, I would like to pull item 15, just to make some comments before we vote on it. Any other supervisors? All right. Okay. We have the consent calendar. We have three comment cards on item nine on the consent calendar. So we'll take those comments at this point in time. And the Logue family traditionally has an order you'd like to go in, so take whatever order you'd like.
My husband went to the restroom.
All right. We won't put him on first then.
Would you like to see if your dad's gonna join us quickly? All righty. I'll go ahead first. I want to thank you. I cannot say that we have been ignored by this board. We've got a whole item just for our family. It's thrilling. This all goes back to 2000, when we missed a notice on weed clearance. And they cleared our land and charged us $3,000. And then we have been very, very alert to follow the notices that have come in the subsequent years. This year, we received one, and we had three days to clear a parcel of property by the fire department. We brought that to your attention, and you did not ignore us, and I do thank you very much for that, especially Linda Parks' office. Very, very helpful. We still have a little bit of a dilemma, though. What if we're gone for those three days next year? I worry about what's going to happen next year. We didn't send in our notices exactly as we were told to do. One was the wrong color, came at the wrong time. And the fire chief has taken an opportunity to berate us on that, with this letter, the latest letter that he's written to us, and is here today for you to put in your file. I hope this doesn't happen next year. Fire Chief Roper, I'm available by telephone. My phone number's 479-4474, area code 310. Please call me next year. I'll be happy to clear my land. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, another member of the family.
Hi, my name is Kyle Logue. I appeared before this board at a previous meeting and suggested the fire hazard direction system attain a modernized platform. If the fire department cannot computerize the process as claimed by Chief Roper's fax, there should at least be some paper systems, such as a daily inspection sheet. In any event, the board should require written results and immediate availability of records to the public, what prevent any changing of results and ensure proper clearance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kyle. And our final speaker, Mr. Logue.
Yes. Good morning. I'm here about a subject we've been here on frequently. The theme that runs through this thing, again, is the unaccountability of the fire department, the lack of an inspector general, the act of lack of any internal checks and balances. We received this by a fluke. We found out about this yesterday. We really haven't had time to repair. This is a self-serving report, mostly self-serving, by the fire department, where the fire chief takes us a task for not sending the right colored slips. I want to lead you through this one more time. I brought this before, and I held up this, one of these notices for you to see, and I believe Supervisor Bennett looked at this. Again, this year, they sent out a double mailing, each time 14,000 notices, and probably because of the ownership, my husband and wife, probably 20,000 people involved, most of whom are voters, I would assume. People know that this thing is in a fouled-up condition. This is the first wave of the notices which they sent out on April 20. This has a detachable slip on the bottom that says tear off to return the off portion. Together, there was a red slip with this. This is the back of the notice. This notice was superseded exactly seven days later with this notice, which also had a bottom yellow tear-off slip. There were total of three tear-off slips, two tear-off slips of the all color, one red, everyone in this county sent out. This one mailed on the 27th, seven days later, says, "Please disregard your notice of big hazards. It was mailed to you last week." So this is out the window. It said disregard this. Well, that's what this notice here, which has the yellow tear-off portion here, it says, "Last week." The notice went out to property owners, they have contained incorrect information. Now, this is the third one, says, "We have received the notice of big fire hazard last week and have already mailed back the tear-off slip." The tear-off slip is this. This is the tear-off slip. This red slip is loose in the envelope. We demand the tear-off slip," referring to that one right there, "do not mail back the tear-off slip from your new notices," is this one here. "The slip you have already mailed in will be sufficient." While not having mailed in either the red one or the tear-off one, we mailed in the tear-off one here. There's a letter in there that we sent to the chief, and we asked the chief, "Here are the three yellow tear-off slip, slips called the building. Please let us know are our lots cleared or not." On May 27th, Craig Morgan, who's been giving this heck for five years, called us up at home. We got the call, and said, "Your lots are okay, but we're not going to mail you back anything in writing because you failed to send in the red slip." Your own instruction on this 27th says to ignore this first mailing, and refers to this other tear-off slip. This is what we mailed in. Now, the chief got this. He didn't ask anybody, "Are they clear or not? Please put an answer on each slip and mail it back to the gentleman." He didn't do that. Instead, he had Craig Morgan call him back. And he, four times at least in that conversation, he told us, "You're not going to get anything back." Then, the thing that we worried about, so much happened to us, we sent this notice that on one of these lots, now it had been inspected on May 31st, that was after he'd said they're okay, but this one came back not approved. I held this mess up, and Mr. Flynn asked about this, Mr. Bennett did, and they have this, and they took it at some midnight today that they mailed it. They gave us, we received it, they mailed it, and the envelope shows this. We got it on the 10th. This left us Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to have this cleared and approved. We went to the fire station.
Excuse me, Mr. Logue. If you want to get your testimony on file, you'll need to be closer to this microphone. I don't know if you want to go back and sort of summarize what you just said. I'll give you an extra minute.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Bennett.
Do you want to summarize sort of the first one? One second.
The second wave of notices was superseded by, the first wave was said disregard this on the second notice we got. We disregarded it. We tore off the slips, mailed it to the chief, asked him to inspect this. May 27th, Craig Morgan called, and he said, "We were not going to get anything in writing." I said, "Would you please send the fax over to Supervisor Parks' office telling they're approved?" So we have some way of memorializing this, that you're telling us these lots, we reported that back to you. He said, "No, I'm not going to do that because you didn't send this red slip in, and you know from past experience, Mr. Logue, bad things can happen to people who don't follow directions of the fire department." That's alluding to the $3,000. He's, in a way, he's threatening us again about this. After we'd been up here before the board, well, we were appearing here not even knowing this, on the 31st, they inspected this lot.
I'm going to just ask the clerk, will you send us for one more minute? I'll give Mr. Logue the extra minute that I allowed him to. Actually, it's minute 25 you're getting, but go ahead.
So now, here came this bombshell. Here's one of these lots that they've approved. The same thing we're saying and trying to ensure never happens to us again happen, and says that we have to clear this lot. It says, "Spirit, our clear sumac." There are hundreds of sumacs. This is almost four acres of a lot. The perimeter's 1,500 feet. We didn't know what to do, so we were very lucky that we were at home. We were very lucky we could get somebody to go out at high price, paid $560 to have every sumac in sight cut down. And we went to the fire office in Camarillo and said, "Would you please tell us where this sumac is," or whatever. She said, "They couldn't do this." But we knew about me because we listened to it on the program. Everybody's heard you testifying before the board. I said, "And we don't have a diagram of the lot." I said, "Here." And the three of us were there, and they gave them this, and marked it up. They didn't do it. Then the chief sent us back this letter. In this letter, he says that we had failed to send back the red slips. He's got it in parentheses. I call your attention to this letter. This letter is a completely disingenuous piece of business because he's referring to stuff that his own instructions said to disregard. And he preaches to us in this, "Next year, please observe the regulations and so forth, and so we can handle this in an organized manner." I only ask of you this, that you take some interest in this, that you put time limits on these processes, and give people at least 14 days if they get this notice. And if they send out a notice, that they send it out certified mail, so that not only are we protected, but the county's protected.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Logue.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
That ends our public comments on the consent agenda. We have two items polled, item 15 and 16. We have a motion on the consent calendar. Please.
Move approval is amended.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to consent calendar being approved? Seeing none, motion carries. Consent calendar is approved unanimously. I think I'd like to go ahead and just do item 15 and 16 right now. Alls I want to do on item 15. Item 15 makes reference to the design savings, the energy design savings we have for the juvenile justice complex. And I just want to call out, it's just another successful effort on the part of the county to achieve greater energy efficiency than is required by code with the design, and it's garnered a $58,000 rebate for the county for designing the juvenile justice system with better energy efficiency. So my compliments to staff for doing that. Item 16, Supervisor Parks.
I just wanted to abstain from this one. I'm a good friend of one of the individuals.
Okay. But...
Move approval of item 15 and 16.
Move approval of item 15 and 16. Is there any objections? We have one abstention, Supervisor...
Yeah, if we could separate those two items.
Oh, okay. Yes, if we could separate.
Okay, move approval of item 15.
Is moved and seconded. Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries.
Move approval of item 16.
All right. Moved and seconded.
Abstained.
Any objections? One abstention, two abstentions, because I also have a lot of personal contact with this individual. Motion carries three to two for item 16. We're now at, we are now at board comments here. Excuse me one second here. I'll turn this page. What's that? Oh, three, zero, and two abstentions, not three to two. It was three, yes, no's, and two abstentions on item 16. Thank you. We are at public comments. We have two public speakers here today, Michael Kane and Lee Renneker. Mr. Kane. Is Mr. Kane here? Is this Mr. Kane?
My name is Michael Kane, and I am a resident of the city of Ventura. I'm here this morning to address the illegal use of firearms, not firearms, fireworks in the city of Ventura and also in the county of Ventura. The only thing legal with respect to the private use and handling of fireworks in the majority of Ventura County occurs in Fillmore, where it is legal to sell fireworks. In Fillmore, the city fathers obviously care less about the, pardon me, obviously care more about the almighty dollar. And recently, they had sales in Fillmore of fireworks in the vicinity of $1.3 million. They care less in that respect than about the anarchy they are causing in the rest of Ventura County. Let's look at that word, anarchy. Webster says it's a state of lawlessness, the absence of government authority, the absence of order. I suggest that this is what is going on in the county of Ventura with respect to the private use of fireworks. The private use of fireworks is not legal in most areas of Ventura County, but a significant number of our citizens choose to ignore the fireworks laws for their own personal enjoyment at the expense of the majority of our citizens. The police in Ventura County, for example, in Oxnard, Chief Lopez, in the Ventura County Star, talked about the impossibility. They were overwhelmed. I talked with Lieutenant Davis at the Ventura Police Department. He reported the same thing. People just ignore the law, and the police are just totally incapable of handling the problem. And by default, I repeat, by default, it is legal to fire off fireworks in the county of Ventura, in the city of Ventura, in Oxnard, contrary to the laws in place. I encourage this board to use its clout to urge law enactment to enable our outgunned police agencies to control the pervasive problem in the future. I have two suggestions, and I'm really copying from Chief Lopez that I respect. One, get serious on fireworks enforcement and support the raising of fines to the 1,000 or 2,000 or 5,000, whatever it takes level, to control this problem. Two, shut down Fillmore fireworks sales by promoting legislation against the selling of fireworks in Ventura County for private use. In short, stop playing games with the law-abiding citizens of Ventura County and the outgunned police by taking positive steps to halt this pervasive problem. A model I would suggest, and my time is running out.
It is. I was just going to let you finish. Just one, you have a few more seconds?
Okay. The model I would suggest is save our enraged citizens and our police. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your attentiveness to the clock. Mr. Renneker.
Good morning, members of the board, Chair, and Mr. Johnson. My name is Lee Renneker. I'm pursuing building a house for myself and my family. It requires use of a higher septic standard. And last week, I came down here with my wife and two daughters to make a statement together with their support, but regrettably, we missed the time and missed the public comment last week, so I dropped a prepared statement off and thought I would just appear this morning just to recap that statement for your information. First of all, I've been very persistent, and I think, although not to tell a sob story, but I think it might warrant me telling you why I'm so persistent, and I'm sure you all enjoy your own houses and enjoy the luxury of owning a house. I'm trying to move my family from a rental unit into a house I want to build for my family, but unfortunately, my health is not on my side, although I look probably quite healthy. But a number of years ago, I had one kidney and one adrenal gland removed, and in 2002, I was in UCLA and had my other adrenal function removed, and they almost took out my other kidney, which means I just dodged a bullet of being on dialysis in 2002. And that tumor and that occurrence could happen next week, next month, next year, and I could find myself on dialysis or worse, for that matter. So there is a reason for my persistence in trying to get my family into a house that we own instead of a rental unit. The technology I propose is, again, nothing that's borderline or risky, it's ANSI-approved, it's NSF-approved, it's approved statewide in many states, from Alabama to Washington. There's no academic studies, there's no field tests, there's no case studies that approve there's any problem with it. It's in use in many places. If I was in Ohio, 1,000 feet to the east, certainly would be, I'd be building my house right now and not pestering you or your staff about trying to adopt this standard. The foundation of the code is the Uniform Plumbing Code that can the Ventura Environmental Health people use, and the UPC explicitly states that the purpose of the code is to set minimum standards. And it expressly states that the code's intent is to provide the latitude for new innovation and new technology and not foreclose the ability for people to use these systems and these techniques where it so fits their property or their needs or the county's needs. I propose to use it. Certainly through my persistence, the Environmental Health Department has accepted an application from me, and after 11 weeks of review, they did provide comments to me, but the comments, I don't want to go into any great deal here because it's neither the form nor do I have the time, but essentially, even though this, I've spent over a year, interest rates have gone up, construction costs have gone up 30%, but the staff has required me to prove I cannot use the lower standard before they'll consider the higher standard. I mean, it seems somewhat obvious that if I could use it, I wouldn't be here. Secondly, they're also requiring that I prove the legitimacy of this new technology. When it's fully accredited, it's approved, it's in place, I don't really understand what the resistance is to it. And lastly, and probably most importantly in their comments, is they said they cannot complete the review of my application because the new technology does not conform to the design standards for their conventional systems. So there's some issues here, but underneath everything, it's a great system, and I just want to close by saying that if you look at this from a purely objective viewpoint, that I want to use technologies to the highest standards, it adheres to the new California Water Code regulations, it adheres to state water quality control board resolutions, it adheres to AB 885, it adheres to the new evolving approach in the academic world to one of treatment as opposed to one of pure disposal of affluent, because it treats it rather than just disposes of it. And I am going to pay for the entire system. It's going to be owned and operated and maintained by Ventura Regional Sanitation District, so there's no liability issues there. If it ever sells, which I have no intention of selling, I want to live there forever with my family, it will be in the title report that the Ventura Regional Sanitation District has an obligation for which I'll be paying them monthly to oversee this system, and the risk is purely mine. I'm going to invest thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands, in this house, this technology, give it to Ventura Regional Sanitation District, and if there's a problem, it's really my risk that's on the line here and my family's risk. And I don't, being an engineer, I'm not about to foreclose the ability of my family to live in that house by putting something that's risky in the ground for them in the event that for whatever reason my health fails. And it fully adheres to all codes, standards, it's the highest quality, and I just want to just recap that statement that I gave you and bring that to your attention, and I have support. I hope you support me, and that's all.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Renneker. And that ends our public comments. We are now with, ready for board comments. I believe we started left last, no, we started right last week, left this week. Supervisor Michaels.
Okay. Just two brief comments. One, I would like to again congratulate our colleague, Supervisor Long, for being awarded the Distinguished Community Leader Award from Ventura County Leadership Academy last week. Congratulations on that. Very well deserved. And I would ask that the board adjourn in memory of Mr. Neil Havens. Neil was longtime postmaster in the city of Simi Valley, longtime member of the Civil Service Commission, representing District Four under two different supervisors, and very, very active in the community cultural arts center, et cetera, and he will be mightily missed in the community. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, and thank you. I have only a list to submit to adjourn in memory, just to call out one of the, on the list, and that's Audrey E. Bud Sloan, Sr. He is a longtime Ventura County resident and very known and loved in the community. He had a life that was quite colorful, a professional heavyweight boxer, a cattle rancher, an oilfield worker, and an entrepreneur, and certainly known greatly in the community through the Cattle Ranchers Association. So I'll submit the list. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll submit the list for adjournment in memory, and that's the comment I have.
Yes, and I just wanted to comment a little bit on Mr. Logue's issue and the fact that, I appreciate the fire department did provide some modification to their process to allow for receipts, and it looks like 25% of people who were given the opportunity to get a receipt did request one. So it is something that I think people appreciate having, so there's something good coming from the process. I hope that we will resolve the issues and the Logues can go home and enjoy their lives. I would like to find out about if we can get more than three days to correct a violation and also if that violation could be sent out in certified mail. And then also, I wanted to thank public works staff. We had previously, party construction had agreed out of the goodness of their heart to give the county $25,000 to help repair Deer Hill Road in Oak Park as a result of some construction activity. It had some damage, and they weren't required to. They did provide those funds, and the Public Works Department has done the overlay, and it just looks beautiful, and I know the residents of Oak Park very much appreciate that. And then I also wanted to just announce a formation of a new nonprofit out in my area out in the Cano Valley. It's called Kids Corral, and it's a, it's a program to put together, a place for developing disabled children, children with autism, that can come to kind of a rural setting with animals, do planting, and the YMCA has agreed to allow us to start up the program there, and we have $100,000 in seed money for that. And I think it will be a wonderful activity for the children who will have a social activity but also therapy and a bit of respite for parents. So it's a great idea and an exciting adventure for us all to participate in, and I know the outcome's going to be great. And then I would also ask that our board close in honor of the people on this list. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have just two comments. One, ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people that I have on this list. And two, make a quick comment about Mr. Renneker. I don't want to get into any of the specifics. The county council would always probably prefer that I not get into specifics with that, but with regard to Mr. Renneker, I just want to let you know it's been a longstanding issue. We have, my office has tried to look at this, and I just would like to express that I believe that our staff is genuinely trying to make sure that they consider the public's best interests, the interest of the neighbors, as well as, well as Mr. Renneker, as they try to work through their problem. And I don't think, I'm not finding anything inappropriate being done by our staff as they're trying to look out for the public good as they look at this issue that he has repeatedly raised with us. With that, Mr. Johnson. Yes, right.
On the same subject, I did meet last week with Mr. Renneker for some hour and a half, and over all the details of what he is proposing, I can see his point of view, but I can also see from the stamp... see from the standpoint of the environmental health unit that they are concerned about what happens to the neighbors as well as to successors and interest if the property is sold, so we're going to meet, I believe, sometime this week to review it one more time and to see if there's some way in which his request can be accommodated with protecting the public interest. If it cannot, well, I won't get into the details of it, but I think Mr. Reniker will understand, he's been given the opportunity to submit certain documents to support the claim that this is used nationwide and is certified, and then the, and nobody is asking, at least it's not the intent to ask someone to prove they can't use a system of lower standard, what has been requested is, is that they identify what things need to be overcome on the property that this new system has to be the solution to, and that's a different question, happens to overlap.
I might add that my understanding is before Mr. Reniker purchased the property, he was told by our staff that the property would not be able to handle sewage and septic, so the property was sold at a, the property was sold with that understanding, and I would assume at a price that would reflect the fact that it couldn't be, could not accommodate the sewer system. So with that, we are ready to move on to our regular agenda items before we get to our 9:30, and that would be item 26, and that is Human Services Agency, Mr. Zimmerman.
Good morning, Chair Bennett.
Second revised letter, right?
Yes.
With the second revised letter.
Yes, revision was on one of the pay scales needed to be added in there on the upper range of that, that's all the modification was, more of a clerical oversight. Today, this board action here is requesting kind of a budget adjustment or a modification to what transpired late in the budget process. If you recall, during the budget process, the homeless program was one of them that was, was being cut and was being pared back in services. There was some activity occurring between our agency and behavioral health in order to try to work out some kind of solution in order to salvage these needed services. At that time, it was agreed that about $120,000 would be provided in a match in order to get social psych, psychiatric, social workers in order to fulfill some of the homeless responsibilities, but there was a lot of detail still to be worked out, and over the last period, those details have been formed and discussed. And what's before you is a alternative solution or a solution to continue the program at an additional savings to the county. Review of specific program services as well as the population, that is, within the homeless target population, not just at Rain but countywide, was reviewed. Other funding sources in detail was, were reviewed, such as federal funding streams and the associated matches with the federal funding dollars was reviewed, and the conclusion was that for roughly just under $100,000 that HSA could access some federal revenue through adult protective services as well as children's financing, as well as diverting some of the priorities of the Cow Works program due to the population makeup there at Rain in particular, is about two-thirds women and children in that. We feel that we could dedicate three resources to the homeless activity and program throughout the county and keep the continuity of services that has been provided for the last nine years in case management structure at Rain as well as throughout the county on that. One of the important items that I'd like to highlight in the letter and there towards the end is that through this whole process, it became very apparent that there are multiple agencies and departments working in an effort to provide services to the homeless, whether it's shelter care as well as case management referral and those type things, and it is suggested that, that the county take a look at unifying those efforts in order to maximize both funding as well as program, programmatic services in order to best benefit this population. So that's, really, the recommendation is to somewhat unravel what was presented in the budget and restore it here as APS workers with the capacity of three at no net cost increase, actually a $20,000 savings to the general fund.
Do we have any questions for staff? We have no cards, move the item. Moved and seconded, Supervisor Michaels.
Yeah, just to comment, I think the collaboration is great in finding all of these answers, but we've known for a long, long time that there's tons of departments working on different programs, all, you know, addressing the same issues and the same clients, and so, you know, my, my concern is that, you know, this is coming so short after the budget approval, and I would hope in the future that it's all done prior to the board, because this was an unraveling already of a, of a budget proposal, and now we're going back and unraveling the unraveling of the budget proposal, so, you know, I'm not admonishing, I'm reminding that this stuff really seriously needs to be addressed at the budget time, so we don't keep coming back with these types of things. And perhaps, you know, the homeless services plan would be a great idea, we might even find more savings in there, but let's hope it can be done before budget starts next year.
Supervisor Parks.
Thank you, I know the auditor also wants to speak to it, but I just wanted to say that I appreciated during the budget session that there was some creativity there, that you worked together, and that, that might be an opportunity to look further at what the departments can do for each other to help further for the clients.
Thank you. And if I could, my, I strongly believe we're going to be in the same crisis next spring as we were in this past spring, and so I'd like us to use that three-month sort of advance period to do as much of the creative thinking as possible, and I'd offer why, because the more creative you are, the more options we have, then, then that gives us even more flexibility in terms, there's some, there's some crying needs that we did not get addressed, and, and I would like to know about it. So appreciate the creativity, don't want to admonish you for it, and just encourage you to try to do as much creativity as you can before the fact as, as possible. No taking. Looks, sounds like, were you trying to get our attention?
Just a request for clarification, we have a handout that is marked as a revision to item 26. I believe the item that is being revised with this letter is item 12. I don't have a revision for item 26, I think it's just been marked incorrectly.
Okay, can we?
I have it right here, went to the board if I can submit this. What it is on recommendation one, it's under the labor classifications, the original board letter on the biweekly, and salary ranges only had the lower range and did not have the upper range of the salary.
I don't have that copy, I have a revision for item 12, was that also submitted?
That was also submitted, so I could provide that.
Do you, do you need a minute to review that?
No, I won't, I won't need time for that, but I just want to make sure that the record shows that the item I have that's marked 26 is really a revision to item 12.
Now you have an item marked 26, that is the correct item?
Thank you.
Okay, great, all right.
Got it.
Everything squared away, Supervisor Long?
Just a comment, I too appreciate during the budget that you were working collaboratively with behavioral health department and trying to figure out how to address what the board clearly wanted done, which was to have a program that's going to continue to assist the homeless needs, and to have now, looking at a centralized collapse or collaboration of all those programs under one umbrella of a homeless program is most appropriate, because I think this board now for the last couple of years has expressed our commitment to take care of what is part of the county's role in serving the needs of the homeless, but is certainly a regional role with the cities engaged in it also, so appreciate that.
If I could, while we're on this item, you identified $20,000 that we're saving to the general fund, right? So that's coming back into the general fund that we've already allocated?
That is, it is shown as an increase in the contingency.
And could we instead make those adjustments and have that money go to the area that I think was most, most in need, and we weren't able to get enough to, and that's the whole child protective services, foster care program, they, they cut 16 social workers, I just wonder if that $20,000 could be used to?
Well, I would endorse that, but I think the CEO's office needs input on, on the utilization and proposal.
Can it be, yeah, I mean, can, as part of this motion, can we just say, take that $20,000 to CEO and find out, can it be, can it be leveraged into that thing, is that, yeah, right, right. Board, board comfortable with that? You know, it's sort of like we got the $20,000, and that's, it's still in that, you know, we could still keep it in that department, but just had a long meeting, we are, the person in charge of our foster care recruiting is retiring, and so I had a long meeting about the whole situation, and it is gloomy, we're talking about, you know, five o'clock at night, the phone rings and social worker says, I've got seven children to place, and we, how do you place seven children at five o'clock at night, you know, we're, we're calling foster homes at two o'clock in the morning saying, will you take this child, you know, we're just, we're really, we're back to emergency status there. So I would like to just make that as, add that part of the motion, that's a $20,000 go to the CEO to work with HSA to figure out how to address this particular, see if there isn't, is it, is it one more creative thing we can do with $20,000 to get, get close to that. Okay, Supervisor Michael.
But as part of that motion, is there a flexibility to report back to the board?
Oh, yes, yeah, oh, no.
You know, I mean, $20,000 may do nothing, but it's better off in the contingency.
Exactly, my motion was for the CEO to work with them and report back to the board, right?
I do have a question.
I misunderstood.
If it goes back to CEO, which it will, I think the CEO has to look at a broad spectrum of priorities and then choose something to bring back to the board rather than restricting his flexibility.
Well, my motion would be, that's, that's where we left with the most, most critical need when we were, when we were putting in the, we have to set some, we have to set some priorities when we were putting in the planner for ag. I certainly was very strongly saying I think we ought to do, we could get two or three social workers for that planner position that we were putting in.
I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying, let's have the CEO take a look at the priorities and then come back to the board, that's all I'm saying. It may be what you're suggesting.
And I am disagreeing, I'm saying the CEO, for this, for this kind of thing, CEO needs direction, and the direction ought to be, we want it to, we want it to try to be used to address this problem for the children.
It may be direction, but it may be your direction, but go ahead.
Well, that's what, that's what we'll find out, right? So we have Supervisor Michaels had to walk out for a minute, I don't know if we need to, to trail this for a minute.
I might just add a comment, certainly $20,000 may not in the scheme of things seem like a lot of money, but we're dealing with the dire straits that we dealt with in our budget, it is a lot of money. And we also know that, you know, we have a huge battle going on at the state and, and not knowing yet where that's going to rest once the state acts on the budget, so I know the CEO will, has been tracking the activity at the state level, and yes, listening to all the girly talk, and will be hearing this probably in our early meetings in September, but, you know, if we can, if we can take some, some money that's going to particularly help children immediately, if we can do so, we should try to move the, move it as a priority.
Looks like you're reaching, Supervisor Johnson.
The agenda closes first thing in the morning, so we wouldn't have time, we would have to come back like on the third if you want it before the break.
Great, okay, good.
We might have something by then from the state.
Well, go ahead and make that motion and see where our vote is, if we need to wait for Supervisor Michaels, who will. Supervisor Michaels is back, so. The motion is the staff's recommendation, in addition to directing the CEO to work with HSA to figure out how to use the $20,000 to help the social worker, child protective service, foster care program, and report back to the board with that, and that report back will come August 3rd, not, yeah, right. All right, that's the motion, and it's been seconded, is there objections? Supervisor Flynn, you don't object to the motion? You don't object to the motion?
Well, I, I, are you asking me? I simply did not respond, and that means I'm not objecting.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to be clear on that. Item 27.
I'm sure you wanted to emphasize that.
Supervisor Long, could you run this for one second, please?
Okay, item 27, good morning, we have a request for ratification of an application for grant funds from the California Department of Insurance for Workers Compensation Insurance Fraud Prosecution Program, a grant award, good morning.
Good morning, board members, Mr. Johnson. Yes, this is just merely a ratification of an annual submittal to the State Department of Insurance for our workers' compensation prosecution grant. There was a delay in getting the grant application together, and it was submitted at the end of June. The grant does fund two attorney positions, an investigator, clerical support, and some administrative costs. Once the award is made, hopefully in the near future, we'll bring an item back to the board at that time.
Okay, are there any questions?
Move the item.
It's a motion and a second, seeing no objections, it's ordered, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Long, item 28, ratification of the geographic information officer's Federal Geographic Data Committee Grant Application.
Good morning, Supervisors, I'm Dawn Robbins, the Geographic Information Officer. We recently submitted a grant to the Federal Geographic Data Committee, and I'm just asking for your file and ratification of the grant application. It was submitted at the end of June.
Move the item, second.
Moved and seconded, is there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Item 29 is a, a request that we co-host a walk-by conference if we were selected, this is just an application, quite frankly, on the application it says, how much money are you willing to put up? Both the county of Ventura and the city of Ventura will put up no money, but we want to let them know that we do have a growing interest in biking, we have a growing bike, growing population of people that are biking around Ventura County, this would be a great place for them to come, both the walk-by conferences, we're trying to be a leader and smart growth and all of that, so the city of Ventura, the mayor of the city of Ventura is going to be taking this to the city of Ventura next week, and so this would just be a direction to allow us to co-host that but not have it be a net county cost item, there may be a de minimis, you know, they may call and ask to be able to use a facility or whatever, but it would be primarily my office that would do the coordination with the city of Ventura. Supervisor Long.
Will the program include techniques for safe biking for supervisors?
I hadn't thought of that being a risk when I, when I brought this item forward, that probably is some risk to that. I'm sure that we could, we could work that in, right? All right, Supervisor Michaels.
I'm assuming that any permitting or whatever would go through the city, and not necessarily the county, but there's no inference that we would waive permit fees or those kinds of things?
No inference on my part, right. And, and I think the odds of us getting this are not great because we're not willing to put up money.
That generally puts it bottom of the list.
Yeah, given the financial shape that municipalities around the country are finding themselves, we may find nobody willing to put up money. I think it's, it's one of those audacious things you put in there, you know, you should want us so bad that you'll put up money, it's sort of like see whether it happens, but, and the, the city of Ventura's visitor and convention bureau is actively interested in this, and so they have some sort of supplemental things they can do to assist. So the motion is to, to accept this recommendation?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Item 30, and this is Supervisor Long?
Yes, the recommendation to appoint Barton Stern to fill the regular position, assessment appeals board number one.
Second.
That's the motion.
Second, is there any objections? Seeing none, item 30 carries probation agency.
Move approval.
Oh, they want to talk.
Oh, you want to say something? Glad we got to listen to her. Where's your hard hat? Your roller skate.
Good morning. I really don't need to say anything, this is just money that has been returned from other jurisdictions, and it's one-time money that's being redistributed through the Board of Corrections.
Snag it.
We did.
All right, so the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any objections? Seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
And for a change, we have no information item here to receive and file, so. And for a change, we have no information item here to receive and file, so. Smoothly running government, not causing protests at this point in time. That's right, yeah, yeah, wait till we get to our afternoon item. We have 9:30, two 9:30 time certance items, and then a 10:00, and we will go into closed session then early today, right after the 10:00, the 10:00 is, would anticipate to be a short hearing. So, we should then have ourselves a decent break between the end of our closed session and our 1:30 for the benefit of board members planning things, and I would, I would think unless we don't want to be on our own for lunch, I think we, I think we would want to be on our own for lunch, giving you more flexibility in terms of your diet, right?
Exactly.
Plus, I'm running low on, I'm running low on the pretzels.
The pretzels, now we need to...
Running low on the pretzels that I'm supplying here, right?
Something with the pretzel supply here.
Okay, so we have, we have five minutes, why don't we take a quick break for five minutes, and then we will start back up at 9:30.
Be opposed to either one at this point in time, one or two.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes, what I, I can understand getting the fee for the extra cost it will take to go back over two years into the records and have to pull it out, and I would assume that that is equivalent to what is being charged. What I'd like, if we're going to go back to the CEO on this, I want to make sure that when we're talking about late, we're talking about with over two years from the immediate transfer, and that's how it's described in here, not just 90 days late. Applicants must file reassessment exclusion claim form within a specified window, typically two or two to three years from the date of transfer, so, you have a comment?
Well, I was, hopefully I could, yeah, help a little clarity. We don't want to get to the point where it's no longer legal to accept the claim. If it gets too late, then legally, they cannot receive the claim. One of the things that happens when we do, let's say it's just a yearly, the, we do a role correction, the auditor has to issue a refund because in effect, they, they receive a new tax bill that's on the new assessed value, and if that value, let's say, is $300,000 more than it used to be, they've paid another $3,000 in taxes. So then they get a refund, which I expect takes interest as well, they get interest along with their refund. So, there's a lot of complexities to being late. The idea of the deferred, the 90 days seem to be a pretty good time for the deferred filing fee, in that it starts, it's a...
And maybe what you can do when we come back is maybe put that in writing for us to kind of get that idea of how late is late. I understand they won't qualify maybe after three years, so if I could get more detail on that, I'd appreciate it. But in terms of support, I can't support a standard filing fee for something that, you know, the law states that you're exempt from, so I hate to charge people for that, but I can understand if you have, if it's going to take more time and more effort to go through your files to have to go and change this, that the fee is justified for just that work, then I can understand that one. But that's as far as I would go, and also, I would want to make sure any resolution includes incorporating that notices will be sent out, and even though you may do that already, I just want it real clear that no one's going to get surprised and end up paying a fee because they didn't know. I want, I want to make sure that that is well-known in advance, and that, that's how I could support at least recommendation number one.
I just want to try to clarify one thing for us as we're going forward, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson, we already approved the auditor's budget, and we already factored, I mean, assessor's budget. Thank you. And we, and we have already allocated positions, assuming some funding, the funding was coming in from these fees, is that correct?
My understanding is about $150,000.
That's right. So, if we don't approve the fee, I just want to be clear, if we don't approve the fee, we will mean, we will end up with the assessor having less projected revenue than the assessor can, can, needs to cover the current positions. This is not adding a position, right? The assessor is saying he thinks the fees are going to bring in 230, and we projected 150, so while he's bringing, but he didn't actually have the fee to us, so now here's the official fee here, and the assessor asking for the position, is saying, "I think it's going to go to 230." But if we say, "Here, we don't want part of the fee" or whatever, then we no longer have $150,000 projection on the fee, the assessor will now have more difficulty getting the work done. I just want to make that clear to everybody so that we know that as we're making this decision, whether we support the fee or not. So with that, we have some discussion out there, I'm going to, I'm going to try a motion, just, I mean, my motion, just, just for...
Just a quick question for the assessor, before, before your motion. Your 150,000 projection, was that for a filing fee on every one of these, or was it for a filing fee at the 90-day mark?
Well, to be perfectly candid, we're sitting at a table trying to figure out how to close a gap on the budget, and I said, "Well, you know, we do have the option of looking at a fee, and I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty confident that we could count on at least 150 coming from that, because I know we have X thousands occurring, and even if costs turn out to be about..." So, it, it was a literal, you know, two-minute analysis that I'm pulling out my calculator, knowing that what we would do is we would go back, I think really it was the next, you know, Mr. Johnson and his staff having the confidence to say, "Well, Dan wouldn't throw this out unless he thinks there is some substance behind it." So, then what we did following is we had to get approval from county council, which is, I believe, like Ms. Ash is here, to verify that we could do that. And at first, there was, that wasn't a slam dunk, because there aren't a lot of counties doing it, so we, that was a little difficult. So we had to go through that process and then calculate all the costs, and the, the projection of 230 is conservative in that we've also prorated it from the time that it would occur, in addition to a straight-line future forecast without, you know, no escalation. So, it's a conservative number. Actually, I think the number would be somewhere over 250, but since we won't be starting at July 1st, it'll be, that's where the 230 estimate comes in. But yes, we, so the 150 was, you know, that was, that's how it came about. Okay. That was, at that meeting, right, that was my initial conservative...
And 150 is written into the budget?
Yes.
Correct, I got that right. I was just wondering whether he was thinking all along in terms of just the, a fee after the 90 days, or just every transaction like this would be a fee.
And did he answer that question for you?
No.
Well, because at the time, I didn't know enough to figure out that.
Okay, back up, what would happen to this projection now if it went, started at, say, a 90-day instead of every transaction?
Here's, here's how I think it would come out. I, I did a little bit of thinking about this yesterday, and if we did a deferred filing fee beginning in that 90-day area, because all of these things as to the quantity are nothing but forecasts anyway. If we forecast, especially if we use the continuation trend and use probably a more accurate forecast for the quantity, which is going to be a little more than that 3,000 number, and we guess that it's going to come in somewhere between 25 and 30%, which would say, 27% is what it comes out to, we will achieve the 150,000 that you've put into our budget as an expectation. So, if it's reasonable to use those forecasting facts, which I think are reasonable forecasting facts, it's, that's what it is, it's a forecast.
So you're saying with the 90-day delay, it'll be 150,000?
Yeah, with a 90-day delay, if it's 27% respondents or after the 90 days, we'll still achieve 150.
Right, okay, all righty. I'm going to, I would make the motion that we accept recommendation one, we don't accept recommendations two and three, just to kick this off, because I think we have some permutations out there that are out there also. We accept recommendation one, we don't accept recommendation two and three. The rationale for my motion is that none of us like fee increases, but during this time, when we have cut things like the assessor's office to the bone, the, you know, core government to the bone, this is essential if we want to keep the assessor's office working, just like it's essential for every other department in terms of where we are. So, don't like it, but we built our budget, assuming this fee was in there, we just didn't actually have the fee approved, and so now I view this as a follow-up from that stuff.
Which is why I always complain about that.
Right, right. So, anyway, that's my motion.
Let me just say something, you know, we have, have talked for years about getting rate...
Can I just get, so there's a second on, she's second, okay, she's second in the motion now.
The motion requires a second. We've talked about fees and rates for years, that should come before the budget time, so I agree with you on that issue. The fee on this thing, though, is going to hurt people who are, have a difficult time anyway, paying property taxes. And I get a number of people at the office with issues like this, and they didn't know about it, and they come in quite late, and I always refer them to you, but this, this is something I can't support, either one or two.
I would, if I may, amend the motion to just have it not, to have it not applied as a standard filing fee, that it would, it would simply be for basically a late charge, and that would be for the cost of staff to handle the lateness of it, which costs them more.
Okay, that's...
And also that it, it's real clear that they get a notice that you're going to be late, you know, that it's, we definitely need to make sure that we're doing our best to let them not be late.
Can we ask what's the difference in revenue projection?
You said that you still receive 150,000 if you just did the late...
Which is in the budget.
The, the assumptions in the initial presentation are extremely conservative, and that utilized a 20% forecast for the deferred filing fee, and so, what I'm saying, you know, it's, it's probably reasonable. What happens is people either tend to file quick, or they just don't file, and a lot of the people don't file until later. They, unfortunately, many people don't file until they get their tax bill. They sometimes don't even notice it when they get their assessment notice, but when they get that tax bill, and they thought it was going to be $1,000 a year, and it turns out it's $4,000 a year, they call it pretty fast. So, I, I think on, on our experience, it's reasonable to, to, to tell you on the assumption that 20% of the filings would likely be, 20%, 27% or more will likely be deferred filings, then the computation will still achieve at least 150, which you've allocated to my budget. And so if you were to do, as Supervisor Parks was saying, if you were to separate the two and only have a, approve a fee for the deferred filings of 90 days or more, then I think that will be achieved. If, if you're concerned that that may not be the occurrence, and you want to be more conservative than allowing a fee on a lesser quantity, and you could even stipulate, the standard filing fee would be, let's say, if they don't file within 30 days. I mean, these, this is, lots of options are open, you can design this however you feel best.
I'd like to ask Mr. Johnson, what's your analysis of the assessor's analysis? If we went to 90 days, would we be at 150,000, or is that too hard to determine at this point?
I don't know at this point, I don't know if Mr. Becker, Jim? We don't have an analysis.
What's wrong with bringing this back next week?
Can we bring it back next week?
Hey, you know, it may save you in the long run, you know?
Well, if you want to say no to the whole thing, that won't hurt my feelings.
But when we do it, then we need to adjust the assessor's number of positions in this budget.
Let me tell you what I am happy over, I'm happy we're returning the broker's job to the CEO, which we took away earlier.
Yeah, my suggestion, if I might, Mr. Chair, would be, and I realize there's a motion on the floor, but perhaps if we held this for one week and could get a little more solid information on, you know, just exactly how conservative are these projections?
I'll second that motion, but it'll be two weeks, because we have to file the board letter by tomorrow.
No, right, 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 whatever.
So I've seconded that motion.
Well, he could put a...
And you may be dark, I guess.
And I remove my amendment.
Are you? You're releasing it?
Okay. So, I withdraw the motion, we have a second motion that goes onto the floor, which is to...
Don't you have to read, withdraw?
He did.
I just did, right.
They took, they took care of that.
And so, we have a second motion on the floor to hear this item on August 3rd, or continue this to item 3rd.
We have a bit of analysis about the late period, 90 days versus like a half a year or a year, what, what is the period? Yeah, I just, I would like to have a little look at that, too.
When you say analysis of it, what, what would be some keys that you're thinking?
What I would like to know is how long we can stretch out that time for people to comply before it's, and how it affects your staffing levels, so therefore the money that's coming in.
Well...
I think, I mean, if you have to go back in the records two years, it's going to cost you more than going back three months, I would think. Is that right?
You know, in terms of refunds that might have to occur, the auditor, you know, interest payment, interest refunds along with the principal refund, I question, I'll have to work with the auditor a little bit.
Good, if you can just provide that information, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to carry this, continue this to August 3rd, any objections to the motion? Seeing none, motion carries. We are now ready to go to closed session, to continue our closed session items. We may or may not have announcements coming out of closed session, correct?
Probably not.
I do not expect an announcement from the remainder of our closed sessions. Let's call the Board of Supervisors meeting back to order. I'd like to welcome many of you here. We don't normally have a full audience here at 1:30. And so, just a few things. Number one, welcome to the County Government Center. We obviously have some challenges in front of us to try to get all of this testimony done today, and make sure everybody has the opportunity for their free public comment, and at the same time, try to do it as efficiently as possible. So, a few things. One, if I could ask, so a few things I'm going to have to ask you by law. One, the people that are standing back there, after I make my comments, we're going to have to ask you to go down to the downstairs item, but you're not legally allowed to stand back there. And that's our fire marshal on those kind of things that do that. Secondly, we have two items here to hear. One is on Piru, and one is on the Colton Lee Communities, Santa Susana. And it's, it's pretty obvious that most people are here for the Colton Lee Communities, Santa Susana area. So, my first question is, could you put your hand up if you're here to testify on the Piru project? Okay. Then, as a result of that... Yeah, exactly. So, as a result of that, we will cover the Piru project first, because we'll be able to expedite that very quickly. So, if there's anybody downstairs, or anybody that wants to testify on the Piru project while I'm making these comments, will you please come and make your presence known here? I think we have one walking in right now, here on the Piru project, right? And if there's anybody else, if you would come and please let me know. That. A couple of, couple of other things. We'll call you up in just a minute. I just want to make sure that you are aware that we'll be doing that, that first, and expediting that. A couple of other things that would be helpful for us in terms of trying to move this along. One, we just had one cellphone go off. If everybody could please turn your cellphones off if you have your cellphones on. Two, this is a public testimony where we really want to try to hear from everybody. When we have strong feelings, and particularly a lot of people from one side, we want to make sure that we're respectful of every speaker, so if there is somebody that comes up that says something that's objectionable to you, that's what we have to listen to all the time up here, and that's what we all need to listen to, if everybody just respectfully listen to that. But if we engage in the cheering, and the booing, et cetera, it does not facilitate public participation, and we're trying to facilitate that. So, that's one request I'd like to make of everybody, is important to you. You wouldn't be here if it wasn't important to you. And every person that's taking the time to be here deserves to not only be heard, but be heard in a non-intimidating fashion. So, if everybody would help us with that. The other thing is that we have over 75 speakers that want to speak today. If we go with our normal time limit, and people are not concise in their testimony, we will be here for a very long time. That wouldn't, I think, necessarily lead to good government. If everybody could, as much as possible, I believe many of you are trying to say by your statement here, and by being willing to come up to the microphone, how strongly you feel about it, probably, number one, I want to confirm, Maria Mason?
Yeah.
Has indicated that she's the representative of the Homeowners Association. If everybody's in agreement with that, we're going to let Maria go first. Is anybody in objection to that? That's when we finally get to the public testimony. We still need to have the staff report come. And then, if we could ask you to be just as concise as possible, it will register, believe me, particularly if you're saying something that's already been said. If you want to stand up and say, I repeat that, or if you, when we call you, you say somebody's already said what I want to say, I just want to register my voice, that would be fine also. But the maximum for everybody's going to have to be two minutes for us to be able to get this thing done, in, in an efficient time. I think those are all the things that would help us before we move into the staff report. Again, thank you for coming. Does anybody have anything else with this, with this size audience here? Yes, sir?
Yeah, just one other person that's, I feel, someone first. The gentleman sitting directly behind me is an attorney, and because of his scheduling...
Would like to go second?
If he could go second.
Okay, we'll be pretty, okay, we will do that, but a lot of people will want to try to say they'd love to go early and then leave, but we will take this gentleman. What's his name?
Matthew Hatrius.
Okay. We'll put you on next, then, when I come to your card. If somebody remembers his name, I'll forget his name, and I'll keep calling for him, et cetera. Also, I will always call who's on deck, and if that person on deck would come down to the front row, so that you can get to the microphone quickly, so we don't wait for people to come all the way down, that would be helpful. Thank you for that clarification, and we are ready to go. All right? Everybody set? Okay. Oh, and this is it. As I finish my comments, this is the Piru one, we will accept no more cards, okay? So, this is the close of the reception of cards. Does anybody have a blue card out there that you want to submit? Thank you very much. The blue cards, the clerk will not accept any more blue cards. We're ready for staff's presentation, and I hope that will be...
This for you. Chairman Bennett, it has been your board's practice to hear each case separately, and to vote on each case individually.
And consequently, we want to do Piru first.
Okay. And is that how you'd like to proceed?
Yes.
All right. The first case is GP 040002. The applicant is James Finch, representing Ralph Myers, represented by Ralph Myers of Venter and Carpenter. As members of the board are aware, the screening review begins with the board's general plan amendment screening guidelines. That's Exhibit 1 in your board letter. The guidelines require the applicant to avoid six specific items in Part A, and then show potential conformity with the general plan in Part B. The general plan review is limited to potential conformity with the land use section of the goals, policies, and programs, and for the Piru area plan, that would be Section 3 of the Piru area plan. Within the goals, policies, and programs, one of the policies incorporates the guidelines for orderly development, Exhibit 2 in your board letter, which contains its own set of policies. The housing goals of the goals, policies, and programs document are also part of the review, and the housing element includes the land use appendix of the general plan. These, then, are the areas and topics reviewable for a general plan amendment screening. The full sequoia review of hazards, resources, and services would take place during permit processing. Any further approval at the screening stage is merely approval for further processing. No permits or entitlements are conferred, other than permission to apply for entitlements. This applicant's request involves a 32.8 acre site, and is comprised of three contiguous It's located in the Piru area of interest, the Piru area plan area. It is outside the area plan's urban boundary currently. It's outside the nearby existing community boundaries. It is within the area exempt from SOAR, as described in the Ventura County General Plan. The site is bounded on the north by the Piru Urban Community Boundary Line and the Piru Citrus Association Packing House. There's agricultural citrus across Main Street to the east, an Arco gas station in three dwellings to the southeast, planted citrus agriculture to the southwest, and land cleared for agriculture to the west. The applicant is requesting to amend the current general plan land use designation from agricultural to urban, the Piru area plan land use designation from agriculture to R6, which is residential, four to six dwelling units per acre, for a 27.8 acre portion, and to R15, which is residential, 10 to 15 dwelling units per acre, for a five acre portion. And he is seeking to amend the zoning from AE 40 acres to RPD, residential plan development, six dwelling units per acre for the 27.8 acre portion, and RPD 15 DU per AC for the five acre portion. In a letter to your board, which is at Exhibit 4, Figure 3, Mr. Finch states that he intends to propose lots for 145 single-family homes and an apartment complex with 65 units of unspecified affordability. The current land use on each parcel of the 32.8 acre screening site is citrus or row crop agriculture, or preparation for agriculture. There is a 2.2 acre parcel that contains a single-family farmhouse and accessory buildings that he intends to demolish. North of the site, again, is the Piru urban boundary. It is a parcel designated industrial, zoned M2, and contains the citrus packing house. There is agriculture designated and AE zoning, containing a single-family detached dwelling immediately to the east. To the east across Main Street are the Habitat for Humanity Single Family Residential Subdivision, which is designated R6, and zoned R1, 6,000 square feet, and other agricultural designated parcels that have been screened for further GPA processing of R6 and R15. To the southeast of the subject site is, the designation is commercial, the use is an Arco gas station, and underutilized commercial buildings and a vacant lot. To the southwest, there is a 5.44 acre parcel designated agriculture, and it is also in the SOAR exempt area. To the west, the designation is agriculture. Parcels to the west, including the property offered for planning as a community park, are not within the area exempt from SOAR.
I hope in the interest of time, we're almost done with this paper.
Oh, yes, very much so. The proposed amendment request is located in an area where the board has directed the preparation of a land use study scheduled for a public hearing within the next 18 months. However, the planning department has concluded that the applicant's request to be included in a screening, as a screening applicant in the Piru area plan update, has been found to be desirable. There are other factors to be considered when determining appropriate zoning. These will have been found to be consistent at this point, and will again be reviewed as part of the Piru area plan update. Notice was sent to addresses within 300 feet of any boundary of this property, and it was published in the Ventura County Star. Comments were solicited from the Piru Neighborhood Council, the Valley Advisory Committee, and the Fillmore Piru Environmental League. We did not receive any written comments, however, Mrs. Janet Bergamo is here today to comment. The conditions for processing are on Page 8 of the board letter. The language is consistent with conditions of approval for most recent screenings in the area, and this does conclude the staff report for GP 040002. Mr. Ralph Myers is present, and he is representing the applicant. Mr. Myers told me that he concurs with the staff report and does not intend to speak unless you have questions for him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one speaker. Board members have any comments before we call a speaker up? Any questions before we call a speaker up? If not, Janet Bergamo?
Bergamo is close enough. I'm Janet Bergamo. I'm serving as president of the Piru Neighborhood Council, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak when you have such a full agenda and a big controversy maybe to contemplate. As far as the community sense of a rezoning of this particular piece of property, it actually seems pretty logical, since there's development slated for the east side of the street, that the other side would be residential. We've been working pretty closely with Mr. Finch. He's been a regular attendant of our area plan meetings, and so I have a... He's been a regular attendant of our area plan meetings, and so I haven't prepared anything formal on paper because I think that everything in Piru is very much in flux right now, including much of our general plan guidelines that need to be examined. One concern I do have, and I think that my community shares this, is that right now there's a recommendation that 85% of anything coming in would be single-family and the other 15 would be apartments. I believe that this was intended to apply to your current urban boundary. Once you extend it into this larger portion, I think you have to consider the problem of density in an area where we have no services. We have no police station with sporadic sheriff patrols. We have a clinic that's only open a few days a week. The only public transportation from Piru to Fillmore can take you anywhere from 25 to 45 minutes to get from Piru to Fillmore, which is a 10-minute drive. We have one small school. We have a total of a dozen employers in Piru, and none of those people, and that's the greater Piru area, none of those people are expanding enough to provide more than a handful of jobs to incoming residents. So there is a concern there that if we're looking at apartments, we're looking at density, not only the traffic and the impact of schools, but the position that those people will be in once they move to Piru, because we would like to be something besides the last cheap dirt in Ventura County. We would like to have people who move to our community because they like a quaint little rural area. And those people are going to be in a position of having no services, that are going to be commuting to jobs all over, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I will close the public testimony part of this item and turn it over to the board for board comments and a motion.
Just if I might, thank you, and I appreciate Janet coming to speak on behalf of the Neighborhood Council. The staff report was very thorough, really covered. There's been a lot of hands-on work with the community, with the area plan that's underway and the other footprints in Piru that the Neighborhood Council is very interested in making sure that they have input, and the owner of the property is very receptive to working, continuing to work with them. So I think it's a very appropriate application for our general plan screening process and would support the staff's recommended conditionally approval for further processing of this.
Set a motion?
That's a motion.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Is there any opposition to the motion? Supervisor Park?
I just wanted to comment that, you know, I respect the community association's desire to keep this in single-family because of the concern the density may not be adequately addressed with the existing infrastructure, you know, where are the kids going to go to school and all that? So I do support the portion which talks about single-family, but I am going to look closely at any kind of density there that's going to generate in excess of what your infrastructure has.
Okay. Any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, motion carries. We are done with that item. We're now ready for the staff's sufficient report on the Colton Communities Project.
Waiting for change of slides.
There we go.
The next case is GP 040001. That's the Colton Lee Communities applicant, and the location is the Santa Susana Existing Community area. This request is to change the existing community land use designation from existing community RE 20,000 square foot lot density, RE 1 acre density, and RE 5 acre densities for a parcel of approximately 23.6 acres in size to existing community RPD, that's residential plan development, at a density of 11 dwelling units per acre, for the purpose of proposing a multifamily apartment project. In a letter to your board, the applicant has indicated he would like to propose 150 to 250 apartment units. North of the site is the city of Simi Valley, and what you're seeing there is the MetroLink Railroad right-of-way. The area above is developed for mobile homes, and most of that is MH zoning for the city of Simi Valley. Immediately to the east is Knolls Park. Immediately to the south and wrapping around to the west is the rest of the Santa Susana Existing Community area. The land use designation there is existing community RE 10,000 square foot. Many of the lots are nonconforming as to size. The recommendation of staff is conditional approval. Those conditions are at Page 5, and they include concurrent processing of entitlements and a methodology for determining the final density. The planning staff has indicated that a planning density of 11, excuse me, eight units per acre is appropriate. However, we will ask the applicant to submit a study that can be verified indicating that this is indeed in conformity with the actual density in the area. There has been previous subdivision entitlement screening activity as noted in the staff report, but those attempts have been incomplete. That concludes the staff report for this item. The applicant is present, and I believe you have many speaker cards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant have a speaker card in? The applicant needs to have the right to speak, so we need to have the applicant speak, and then we will follow the applicant right up with Maris Mason.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman Bennett, and honorable members of the board. My name is Gary Gorian. Since I didn't fill out a card, 223 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Suite 307 in Thousand Oaks, California. I'd like to start by quickly thanking staff, particularly Rita Graham and Mr. Stevens, who did a very detailed study on our proposal, and we concur with the request to reduce the density down to the eight units per acre, as conditioned in the staff report. I'd also like to thank a couple of people who've helped us, who were unable to make it today, from Housing and Community Development. Kathy Cresswell has been instrumental in her support of our proposal, as well as Linda Nichols in her office, and Mr. Gilbert Beasley of Fairway Housing. I'd like to ask the board's indulgence if I could keep my presentation to eight minutes and then allow a two-minute rebuttal, if that's acceptable.
Two-minute rebuttal after all the speakers speak?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's our normal policy.
And then finally, Ms. Bergamo, I don't think she wanted to wait, but we have met with the Piru board, and she has given us five letters to present from the Piru Neighborhood Council, and I'll just read the gist of it, that they encourage the project, and rather than relegate the, I think what they're saying is the density needs to be spread through the county, so we'll have a copy of that. Also, we have a letter from the mayor of Simi Valley, Mayor Bill Davis, who has written a letter in support of the project as well, so we'll provide copies for that. And with that, I'll talk real fast because I probably used up a lot of my minutes. As I said before, we're Colton Lee Communities. I'm a 37-year resident of Ventura County. I was born here. There was no hospital, so my parents had to drive in. I live here, have two kids, know a lot of people here, so we're very familiar with the housing crisis in real life here. The format we'd like to use is to present the problem today, i.e. the housing crisis, identify the solutions, and then describe our proposal. I think everybody knows we have a housing crisis in Ventura County. Recently stated in the California Economic Forecast, the population of Ventura County has continued to grow, and the growth of the population has come principally from new births. This accounts for the largest share of population growth in Ventura County. I can attest to that because I've added two of the new births within the last six years myself. What's happening here is we have a median home price of almost $615,000. That's a $157,000 increase, which is 25.7% year-to-date. What this means in real life is that only 15% of the households can actually afford to live in Ventura County, and this is a staggering and disturbing number. The rental market has not fared any better. In fact, in Simi Valley in particular, where there's a wealth of jobs, it's done much worse. As of 2003, and I can tell you that these numbers are up from here, the average rental for a one-bedroom apartment home in Simi Valley is $1,117 per month. That means that you need to make $43,000 a year to afford the average rental one-bedroom apartment in Simi Valley. And I think what we have to ask ourselves is how many professionals, how many people, young people, seniors can, are we pricing out of the market? And I can tell you from friends and family that my firsthand experience is it's pretty Housing is a regional issue. It's a county-wide issue, and the housing issues are expressly governed through the housing element in the general plan. As you know, the housing element of the general plan is the county's promise to the state to provide housing for all different types of people. The general plan is drafted in a manner that accommodates change, fortunately, and what we did was we turned to the general plan to see what we could do to help alleviate a large portion of the housing crisis on our particular property. Now we'll move to what we call the solution phase, a three-phased approach. Our general plan tells us that urban development should occur within existing communities. That's in the Guidelines of Orderly Development. Our property is located in an existing community, as pointed out in the staff report, so it's fairly compliant in that respect. The general plan also tells us to increase the number of multifamily and rental units in the unincorporated communities that have a disproportionately high percentage of single-family and owner-occupied housing units. As I think you're going to hear probably if I had to guess a lot today, the nose is all single-family. And while the argument may be presented as that being a negative, the general plan tells us that that's why we need to consider the multifamily in that location. Our general plan also tells us to strive for an equitable distribution of housing types and prices throughout the unincorporated county. What that means is, and what I think Ms. Bergamo's letter will also voice an opinion on, is that the affordable housing should not all be in Oxnard, it should not all be in Piru, it shouldn't all be in Fillmore. In fact, the greatest need for affordable housing right now is in the eastern Ventura County, and with the loss of Amundson Ranch, we've lost 700 very low, low, and moderate income units, and this is, as we believe, an ideal infill location to make a very small amount of those up. It tells us to increase density per unit to reduce the cost of rent, ensure a mix of residential densities, in other words, multifamily as well as single-family, which we talked about a little bit before. The general plan also tells us to explore ways to increase opportunities for low-income and special-needs housing, which is one of the targets that we tried to do with this. On all of our projects, we have seven active projects in the county of Ventura. All the residential projects have some component of affordability, whether it's a senior component or a family component. Usually, the family component brings out the most opposition, but we have learned that. And then it tells us to encourage certain numbers of thresholds for moderate, low, and very low. I won't go through in the interest of time. Our proposal is this: Given the clear direction of the general plan, we realize there's an opportunity to address the housing crisis with our piece of property. Let's take a look at it if we could. The site is located on the eastern end of Simi Valley. As you can see, it's a classic infill opportunity. There's development surrounding it to the south, the north, and the west as well. It's serviced by Catherine Road, which has sewer and water already inside it, and it's at, in essence, what is the doorstep to the city. This is a picture of the site. It's neither agricultural or open space. The site was used for years and years as a commercial equestrian operation and a full-profit feed operation.
And you have one minute left.
Oh, all right. This is the existing surrounding. You can see that we have a kind of a variety of housing types adjacent to us, from very small lots. There's a trailer parked in the city. This is the brand-new community to the north in the city. This is high-density, single-family product. This is attached in the city. What we're proposing is to develop a vacant residential zone, 24 acres, within an existing community, which is very important, with 189 apartment homes. 20% would be designated as affordable for very low and low, and of those, two would be used, reserved for Casa Pacifica to use as transitional housing for emancipated youth. Let's see what-
They need housing too. Excuse me. To develop- People, everybody has the right to say what they want here, and I was just getting ready to say he's coming close to the end, and I was going to compliment everybody for sitting there respectfully. Please, let's not have this happen again during this testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll hurry. Here's our vision as it relates to the general plan. Do we develop urban uses within an existing community? Yes. Do we provide multifamily in predominantly single-family neighborhoods? Yes. Do we provide a mix of densities? Yes. Do we provide very low and low-income units within the unincorporated Ventura County? We do. And do we locate affordable housing in the eastern county fostering equitable distribution? In other words, do we get some in the eastern county where we need it? With that, I'll thank you and take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Supervisor Michaels?
Just one. I noticed that you've kind of landed on, at least in your presentation, a density of potentially 189 units, and that's what staff has conditioned you to. Is that the number that's eight dwelling units per acre? Or is that predicated on some density issue that Ms. Graham?
Oh, yeah, that would be, the staff felt more in conformance with the adjacent surrounding densities.
The densities that are on the ground now.
The actual densities are in between seven and a half to 10 units adjacent to the site, and they wanted to see us remain in that range.
The units for Casa Pacifica, would they be deeded to Casa for their use, or they would be run through area housing for the emancipated youth? Or we haven't gotten that far?
Well, we're kind of getting there. On the 20th, we have a meeting with some of the Casa Pacifica people and Chuck Cohen to try to figure out how to do it. We're actually trying to do it on a piece of property that we've already built in the city of Simi Valley at our Hidden Valley Parker Ranch project. And so the idea that we have is that if we could get a pilot program set up where it was, there was a template, if Casa owns it, or I don't know how it's going to work, that we could do it, you know, on every project that came into town that has any type of density, not just our projects, but anybody's projects.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have some.
Okay, later. Right. Thank you very much for your testimony, and we're now on to the representative of the Homeowners Association, Maria Mason. And on deck is that attorney.
If you move up to the, to the front row, please.
I see a few attorneys in the room that kind of looked like, huh? My name's Maria Mason, and I'm the vice-
Excuse me. Before we start, just a little, I'm going to ask staff to move out of that seat, and that's going to be our on-deck seat, if the attorney can move to the on-deck seat. And just so that we can move things along, on deck after that would be Dwayne Johnson. All right? Thank you. I'm sorry, we'll start your time over again.
It's, my name's Maria Mason, and I'm the vice president of the Susannan Olds Homeowners Association. I will do my best to keep it. I thought I was going to get three minutes, and I was having a hard time getting to three minutes, but I do represent our board and the members of our community. The Susannan Olds Homeowners Association is very concerned with the conclusions made in this staff report. The community would like to think when a report is written such as this, it will be unbiased, not just stating the guidelines and general plan rules and how it does or does not meet the criteria. This staff report is written using every technicality to try to make this project fit. They use phrases like "potential for conformity may exist," "reasonably consistent and potentially consistent." No way will you find it written that it is consistent with the guidelines. Under the general plan amendment screening guidelines, there are six criteria the board will use in denying further processing of a request. The following two items, in our opinion, meet that criteria. 1A4: The staff has made the case that because the subject's land is 23.67 acres, is sufficiently large enough to not be considered a spot designation. We strongly disagree. An apartment complex would be a spot land use since the San Susanna Olds is a rural community with only single-family homes. If an apartment complex with nine buildings and over 500 parking spaces is not a large square peg trying to fit into a spot round hole, what is? Guideline 1A5: Staff also makes the case that since we're all zone residential, in their opinion, the proposed density appears not to exceed the average density of the surrounding area. This is not really an urban development. How can an apartment complex that will add up to 800 people and 500 vehicles to the community that now has a current population of about- that now has a current population of about 1,200 not be in urban development? The letter from Laffco in your packet makes this point very clear. I was going to quote from it, but I won't. The applicant was very creative in getting around the issue of density. Staff seemed to go along with this density analysis by only looking at adjacent properties. If you add all these together and divide them out, you will come to a density of eight dwelling units per acre instead of 4.7, which we are zoned. This does not take into account all of the community, which really extends to the top of the San Suazat Pass road and includes the area of Loudland Lane. If you take the area as a whole, this analysis fails. It is unfair to base a very important conclusion on an applicant's so-called density study. Staff makes it clear that they have not independently verified this study. The general plan policy 3122: This policy sets forth the factors that must be considered to recognize the desirability of retaining existing uses and densities. The density analysis has not been verified to make this argument. Staff claims the need for affordable housing outweighs the existing zoning and that higher densities are more economically feasible for the applicant. The economic impact should be the problem of the applicant, not the county. Staff believes that maintaining reasonable continuity with neighboring properties can be accomplished with proper design. There is no way a nine-apartment buildings with over 500 parking spaces surrounded by a large block wall will ever be compatible with a rural animal-keeping community.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off. Maybe you can hand that, the rest of your comments to somebody else to follow up.
I will.
We now have, we now have the attorney. If you'll state your name clearly for the record, so I can potentially find your card, I'd appreciate it.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matthew Hafey. I'm from Wolf, Rifkin, Shapiro, and Schulman in Los Angeles. We represent the New Crest Oaks Homeowners Association, which is directly to the northeast of the property in question. I wholeheartedly agree with the statements made by the prior speaker, and so I won't repeat them. I want to make a couple of points with regard to the staff report. One of the things that the staff report says is that in, with regard to general plan policy 3.12-11, that there's enough sewer services that would service the area. And as the applicant said, that the only sewer services for this particular project are on Catherine Road, which is to the very east of the project. If you look at the LAFCO memo, that actually states that the sewer would be the responsibility of the city of Simi Valley, and that area would then have to be annexed to the city of Simi Valley in order for the city to provide the sewer services. So this is a real problem with that particular piece of property. With regard to the economic impact on the applicant, I would draw the board's attention to a case called Broadway Laguna. And in that case, it's at 66 Cal II, 778, the court, US, or I'm sorry, the California Supreme Court said that the variance sought by a developer with regard to a lowering of the density requirements would confer not only parity but privilege. To sanction such special treatment would seriously undermine present efforts to combat urban blight and municipal congestion through comprehensive zoning codes. So selective an application of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would destroy the uniformity of the zoning codes, which is their essence. Now, it's an important point, because any kind of economic impact is not a justification for getting a zoning variance in this case. The particular parcel that we're talking about was previously zoned for 54 units, 54 single-family homes, and that is also available to this developer.
And you came this up.
And there's no reason for that to have to do an apartment complex. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Dwayne Johnson, on deck. Casey Gardner, followed by Denai Brines, I believe.
I bought my house 23 years ago in the Knowles. It was very small, and I built it up to about 4,000 square feet, and I had the hopeful expectations of continuing to live there the rest of my life in kind of a rural setting. I can go out on the deck in my backyard with my son and count the stars at night. I don't want it to change. I can't see a parking lot with a lot of lights, the stars going away, and it's zoned a certain way, and I just wish it would stay that way.
Thank you for your testimony. I very much appreciate your testimony being concise. It helps us out a lot. Casey Gardner, and then Denai Brines, and after that, Jason Santiago. So, Denai, could you come and take the on-deck seat? Denai, sorry. Casey.
Thank you very much. I first like to thank everybody for giving me a chance to speak, and I'm glad to see such bright faces and talk to my representatives other than the voting booth. Now, as far as that's concerned, I have a lot of security concerns, as I'm sure you're going to hear throughout the rest of the day from all these lovely folks in my neighborhood, so I'm not going to echo them. But I want to bring something specific to the situation, and that's how you need to make your decision. I know that since I get to speak early, you don't get to hear most of the things you're going to hear by the end of today, but one thing I want you to keep in mind is something that John Stuart Mill said with the concept of utility. And I'm not going to go off on some philosophical tangent, as much as I'd love to, but I do want to get down to the point, is that the five of you have to make decisions for the entire volume of this county. The five of you have to choose what is in the best interest of all the people. Now, because you're imbued with that power to go ahead and do so, maybe we should sit back and try and analyze this situation from all the aspects. Not just so you can hear the number of legal problems we see with this, the number of blatantly non-continuous portions of the neighborhood. In fact, let's just accept the fact that it's not continuous. Are we going to amend it or not? Not just what I point out, that not just this is a scary precedent for unincorporated county land in the rest of our beloved county, but not only point out that not just a substantial security risk, but how is this going to look in terms of building these houses and continuity? I think it's really important, when we look to the general plan, those crazy rules we all agreed on, that we can take a second, sit back, and respect them, and the fact that it doesn't need to be amended. You guys choose what people build on our land in our county. Developers don't choose and then ask for your permission to do it. I think it's pretty clear, from what you're going to hear with security concerns and what I can bring personally, is that we need to take a second to come together and build 54 houses together, and not 184 units.
Thank you very much. Thanks for not using up all of your time. Denai Brines, could we please not have the applause? Denai Brines, followed by Jason Santiago. Jason, if you'd come down to the on-deck circle, please.
Good afternoon, board members, friends, and neighbors. My name is Denise Burns. My friends call me Deni Burns. I have taught in Simi Valley for 36 years. I'm going on my 37th year in Simi Valley. Three years after starting teaching in Simi Valley, I drove into a little community called the Knowles and fell in love. I found a piece of property. I approached the people that were selling it. I asked them, "I'm really interested in this piece of property. Could you give me some history?" That was Harlan and Hazel Zimmern. They're an elderly couple. They were both starting to feel the effects of age and had decided that they needed to move to someplace where it was easier for them. At that time, in 1971, I told them that this was an area that was just special, unique, and amazing to me, and they said that they felt very comfortable selling me their property. Since then, I've lived in the Knowles for 33 years. I have been very happy up there. I've watched the Knowles grow, change, develop, but it has always maintained its uniqueness, its ability to stay a diamond in the rough, its ability to stay a neighborhood that has watched people come, bring families, had the children grow up. Many of those children have stayed, have bought in that community, and have also developed their own families there. I feel that that area, with its single-lane roads, with its lack of lights at night, with its no facilities, but just the community, has always been able to stay and maintain that essence of that quality of life. To bring in a complex where you're going to have apartment buildings where there are no facilities nearby, there are no bus lines that come into the Knowles, there are no streetlights or sidewalks there, many of the people have horses in their backyards, they have dogs and goats and sheep and all kinds of different things, it just doesn't fit with the kind of a neighborhood, the kind of a community that it has developed over the years. And so I'm having a real difficult time with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Jason Santiago, on deck. Chris McDonald. Chris, if you could come down to the on-deck, please, please.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. Back in 1977 is when I first moved into Simi Valley, and I can remember it being about a six-light town. Throughout the years, I've seen it develop and would change, you know, there's going to be a lot of people coming to the town, and growth is going to happen. By the time I was 14, I started exploring the town by myself and ended up in the San Susanna Knowles on my bicycle, and at which point I picked out a house that was going to be my house to live. And 13 years later, I bought that house. I can say that I've seen Simi change from a 60,000-population community to well over 120,000, I believe is what it is. And the little community that I live in right now is about 1,200 people. There are no signals in this neighborhood. There are no streetlights. It's a beautiful neighborhood that you can sit out on your front porch at night and watch all the stars, see all the grand oak trees around it, and just listen to what you don't have to listen to in a city. There's no sidewalks. I see mothers walking their strollers with infants constantly past my house. I really just don't believe that this community can afford another 500 to 1,000 cars roaming through this neighborhood at any given hour. I can tell you, one of my good friends, her son was hit on a bicycle not more than six months ago, right out in front of the fire station. There is no place for children really to play on these streets, and to add another 180 units just does not go with this community. It's a small community. We picked this place to live in for that reason, not to be in the big city, not to live in San Fernando, not to live upon 40 other thousand people. I urge you to choose to let us live this life that we have. It's not about not being able to change and conform. We're willing to do that, but to go from 51 houses to 500 residents...
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Subs.
Chris McDonald, on on-deck. Susan Savaccio. My apologies if I have mispronounced that. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. This isn't just about the Knowles. If you rezone our little historic community from existing community, rural, exclusive, to residential plan development, you're sending a clear signal to all the developers that the general plan is dying. If you vote to rezone, all of Ventura County voters will know that the general plan amendment screening guidelines and this hearing are a song and dance. The sharks are circling. Throw blood in the water, huh?
Thank you for your testimony. I thank you for keeping it concise. Susan, followed by Renee Rosin.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to point out that only a few of us are here to represent the hard-working families of our area who could not attend a public hearing during work hours. I'm also here to present over 700, I'm sorry, over 1,700 signatures collected in opposition to this request. It appears that the argument in favor of this request is the need for affordable housing in Ventura County. I recently attended a meeting with the developers, at which time they discussed another project they were working on in the city of Simi Valley on Tapo Street. The question was then asked, "Why not propose apartments for that more appropriate area?" Mr. Dean Koenicki of Colton Lee answered that they did indeed propose apartments there, but were turned down by the city of Simi Valley because the city felt that they were close enough to their goal in that respect. In effect, it appears the developer admitted that the Simi Valley area of Ventura County was close enough to its goal, that apartments are not needed here. As proof, he even cited the major apartment developments that have recently taken over off foothills, those of Parker Ranch, another Colton Lee project, and those soon to be built in the former hills of the new mall site. There is something wrong with this picture. There is something wrong with this picture when a staff report is based on developers' input. There is something wrong with this picture when there is a supervisor's meeting with the developer but not with the residents. And also, when high-density rezoning is proposed in the exact area that just lost its fire station in order to relocate it to a high-density area. I am counting on the board to remember that you work for all property owners. That includes the families whose lives will be put in jeopardy by this ridiculous proposal by adding 500 to 700 more cars at a single, narrow railroad exit. Allow me to present these petitions.
Thank you. Renee Rosin, and on-deck, Ann Gonzalez. Ann, if you could move down to the on-deck circle, please. Is Renee Rosin here? Are you Renee or are you Ann?
Ann.
Okay. So on-deck is Greg Seymour.
Yes, go ahead, Ann.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ann Gonzalez. I've lived in Simi Valley since 1962. I remember warm light and one grocery store. I've always loved the Knowles. I moved there to also enjoy the city lights, you know, to keep away from the city lights. The turnout today sends really a good message to you today. The residents, one thing I'd like to bring up is the residents of Simi Valley voted on a slow-growth initiative and a hillside initiative. What happened? We voted for it. Where is it? You know, you just, our wishes, voters' wishes have been disregarded. I would like to ask you how the officials were able to accomplish this against the voters? How did you do it? Many of our residents are suing the county for going against the voters. We all have to come to this. I don't want to be affected by this so-called proposal. You know, I live up on a hill. I don't want, I look down at the ranch. I don't want to be affected by all those lights. And today, you're going to hear so many other reasons against this proposal, so I'm going to let others speak, but I'd like to remind you that the model of the Knowles, where the city lights and the country roads begin, you know, that's why I moved up there, and it's the beauty and the peace of it, you know? And I, you know, you talk about jobs, you know? I'm Hispanic, and you can't get a job anymore if you don't speak Spanish. So the influx is not from birth, it's from infection from south of the border.
Thank you for your testimony. Greg Seymour, followed by Alex Dianka. I hope I pronounced that right. Mr. Seymour.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gregory Seymour, and I'm a resident of Simi Valley. I've been in Simi Valley for approximately seven years, and I have a lot of friends that live up in the Knowles. It's interesting, and then the developer didn't mention anything about the traffic situation. There is only two roads out of that area, and they're pretty small, adding at least 500 additional cars to that traffic each day. I don't understand how that's going to work. Secondly, east end of Simi Valley has a problem with overcrowding in the schools. I don't see anything being addressed about the schools. Where are the kids that are going to be in this development going to go to school? Who's going to pay for them to be bused to some other part of the valley to go to school? And who's going to have to pay for that stuff? The residents in that area? So it's costing the people that are living there now. They moved there to be in a rural area. They're not, it's not, as someone said in the newspaper, being nimby's not in my neighborhood. It's not a question of not in my neighborhood as much as it is it's not the right place. I can't afford the typical home in Simi Valley, and I understand that they need affordable housing in Simi Valley, but that's not the place for it. There are so many other places in the area of Simi Valley that that can be done. There's so much development going on in that area, yet none of it is affordable. This isn't the place. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Alex Dianka, and on-deck, Donald Halverson, I believe is how this is written.
I'd like to submit three exhibits here.
Okay. If you'll hand them to the clerk, they'll be officially recorded. Thank you.
My name is Alex Dianka. I live in eastern Ventura County. I have here a copy of the staff report, a 50-page collection of analysis and exhibits, as you are all well aware. It's a pretty lengthy affib. Since I can't address every item in three minutes, let me summarize it for you. The applicant, Gary Gorin, and Colton Lee communities want you to feel guilty that Ventura County killed Amundson Ranch. They be guilty enough so that you will completely disregard the general plan, overlook the appropriate points in the general plan amendment screening guidelines, and completely overlook the guidelines for orderly development, and not see that his rebuttals to all these are flimsy and questionable. The applicant wants to build this 250-unit apartment complex in the middle of a rural and unincorporated area very badly. A gross annual cash flow of $5 million is enough reason for him, but he has to get you to approve it. He believes that he can make you feel guilty that there aren't enough low-income units in the county, then you won't look too closely at the real density numbers of the adjacent areas. I must say that the staff, whoever that is, is not helping here in making it absolutely clear for the applicant. He still thinks he can get at least eight units per acre, even though the density of the surrounding Knowles is a lot less. So he sure doesn't want you to notice that, or that his calculations are based on selective density samplings. The applicant also wants you to feel guilty that you won't notice... The applicant also wants you to feel guilty that you won't notice, so that you won't notice that he has admitted that his project is an urban development in the city of Simi, doesn't want to annex it. He wants you to feel guilty that you won't notice, and so that you won't notice that his apartment complex will increase the population of the Knolls by 70%, that all those extra innocent folk will be sitting right on top of the only exit out of the Knolls area.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Alex Dianka, followed by Roy Kouljian. Are you Alex? Are you Donald Sutherland?
Don, no.
You're Don Halverson? All right. Are you Don Halverson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just got the cards out of order. So, that was Don Halverson. You were asking for the current speaker? No, that's Gregory Seymour. Excuse me, last speaker, could you give us your name again, please?
My name is Alex Dianka.
Thank you very much, sir. There we go. Okay.
My name's Donald Halverson, as we all know. Gary, David, how you doing? My wife and I, we purchased our first house up in the Knolls, and it overlooks Gary's To say this property, you know, is great for high density is not really true, because based on factual data that they have of cutting the 75,000 yards out and replacing the 75,000 yards, they're either going to raise the height of the apartments to somehow interfere with the people who live there, or they are going to, you know, bring lighting to the area, which is not something that's, you know, really a great thing. And another thing about the housing in Ventura County, we have houses, you know, an average price of 614, yet Haven Homes produces houses anywhere from 800 to 100, 1.3 million? Gary? So, that really doesn't solve the problem there, because, you know, it's a vicious circle. You know, they're creating price hikes and benefiting off the part of the market, you know, trying to sound beneficial to the community by putting low income, yet they're causing high prices to occur. That's all I can say, sir.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next speaker is Roy Kouljian, and on deck is Eileen Schaefer.
My name is Roy Kouljian, 9:30, Alta Vista Road. Thank you for catalyzing something that has never happened in the Knolls before, and that is the family spirit that we're getting together. It's just amazing. You should have seen us in the Live Ride Church a week ago. Anyhow, the psychologists tell us that there are two kinds of human beings, inter-directed and other-directed. I was other-directed because they gave me up for dead at six, and then I had to be under my mother's tutelage and had no way of making my own decisions. A few days ago, I was inter-directed in a car salesman, car salesroom where I got a car for my wife, and I was inter-directed. I was dealing. Anyhow, the philosophy of government, it seems to me, is that the general plan amendment was an inter-directed effort by this county years ago, gone through difficult days and months and years of planning. That was inter-directed. The appearance that you give today is that the decisions are other-directed at the expediency of outside forces forcing a decision, so that your, the philosophy of governments is reactive instead of proactive. And so, we ask you to go back to the best of your governing ability for this overcrowded county and meet the needs, but do it in a proactive way, so that you're not just reacting to developers that come in and hit you with something from the outside. Take the best of your ability that you all have, otherwise you wouldn't be here. Do it from the inside out and meet the needs of this county in an intelligent way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Eileen Schaefer, and on deck, Lester Kelly.
Hello, my name is Eileen Larchard Schaefer. I live at 1350 Lane Rainey Road. I'm a resident of the Oak Knolls area. This is a time, I mean, good afternoon to all of you, and thank you for letting us stand here and take your time. I have a letter here that I'd like to do a little bit of quoting from, and it specifically from the criteria for screening amendment requests, and this letter was sent to all of you supervisors, and as well as Rita Graham, because I really appreciate how government works, that I can stand here and talk about these amendments with you. The proposed amendment request would create an island or spot land use inconsistent with the intent and policies of the general plan and density or land uses of surrounding properties. The proposed amendment request does not have a potential for compatibility with either existing or planned uses in the area. This was created directly from the criteria for screening amendment request. Outside of that, though, I have a few other concerns that aren't really, I guess, within government guidelines. My neighbor is an officer with the LAPD, and she said that high density, she deals with the consequences of high density every day, and that is more crime, okay? As a kindergarten teacher, I always have my antenna out looking for situations that look suspicious, people who look suspicious, situations that may not be right. With a park across the street that is frequented by lots of children with more people, you open up more avenues for violence, crime against children. And also, I know bear with me, I am also the program caretaker of elderly parents, and I'm acutely aware of what vulnerable targets elderly make, and lots of elderly people make use of this park. So, safety is a primary concern besides the issues that are listed in the amendment.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Lester Kelly, and on deck is Gary Salvaccio.
Good afternoon. I'm an ex-teacher in Simi Valley, 36 years, and I retired up to the Knolls, have a house up there. One of the things that hasn't really been addressed in just a comment on the nice PowerPoint presentation that was made, Catherine Road is a little narrow, probably in some cases not as wide as some of your driveways, road that goes through the Knolls, comes from Kewner, goes out and around, comes back in. The Knolls is bounded by railroad tracks. There's only two ways in and out. Where this apartment complex is going to be built is right at the entrance to one of those places, one of those exits, right at a railroad track crossing. We were assembling there this morning. We had about 37 cars in that area. It took up all the available parking at that site on the road as it exists now. 500 cars or, as these listed in the proposal, 374 cars potentially would completely impact that area. You couldn't get in or out. If you had to move people out of there, you'd be in real trouble. The only other exit is on Kewner, next to the old railroad station, very narrow, very hard to get out of. People trying to get out of there would meet fire engines trying to come in. For that particular reason, and the reason the Santa Clarita Fire, Sand Canyon was evacuated and was put on alert to be evacuated. We have already been evacuated once this year due to the fires. We have a danger problem here, and it's just a matter of access to the area. The Knolls is not as open as that PowerPoint presentation made it look, and it's also not as grubby. We look a lot better than that, but it is a very small rural community, narrow, two-lane, many times just gravel roads. The only railroad is Catherine, and it's there.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Lester, I'm sorry, that was Lester, Gary Salvaccio, followed by Cheryl Retfeld. Mr. Salvaccio.
Yeah, my name is Gary Salvaccio, and I live in the Knolls. I applaud planning staff's very imaginative and extraordinary conclusions, but the report is just more evidence of a pattern of hostility towards the Knolls and its residents bordering on arrogance and cruelty. This latest onslaught of urban development, apparently encouraged by those county officials, have led this community to one conclusion: We need to change the way things are done. And we have a suggestion for you all. We're forming a political action committee, and it's to promote the passage of statewide legislation. This bill would remove zoning and development oversight in limited-access areas like the Knolls on a statewide basis from county officials and place it in the hands of a state commission. Local police, fire, and emergency personnel will identify and select those areas that are under particular threat of impeded evacuation during an emergency. Once identified, county officials will be forced to seek state approval before rezoning or approving development within those areas. Even at this very early stage, we have several state legislators that have offered to back the bill, and several offers of help have come from members of the Amundson Ranch fight, the Sierra Club, several statewide police and fire groups, and others. We'll be happy to invite you to the first of the fundraisers in Moore Park, Oxnard, Ojai, and Malibu. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Cheryl Retfeld, followed by Sam Hunter.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Cheryl Retfeld. I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm extremely concerned about the impact to Knolls Elementary where my children are students, but because of the limited time, I'm going to talk about the zoning change. And the people of the Knolls purchased their properties because they wanted to live in a rural community where they could keep chickens and horses and goats if they so choose. By putting these apartment buildings there, a lot of that is going to change. There are setbacks for certain animals and noise restrictions and whatnot, so people are going to lose their rights. Ms. Nichols, I've heard repeatedly from Jared DeGonya in your office that you are very pro-property rights, and I guess my question is, why would, and one landowner and his developer appear to have more property rights for something that they're not even going to live in, they're not going to live in the apartments that they built, it's not their community, it's not their home, but the Knolls homeowners who live there and would like to continue living there, they have the property rights that you should be concerned about, the right to maintain the type of environment that they bought into and not change the zoning?
Thank you, and thank you for keeping your testimony concise. Sam Hunter, on deck, Scott Spencer.
Hello, as an immigrant and a naturalized citizen, this is quite a privilege. Thank you very much for that. I want to bring up a few statistics that were printed in the Los Angeles Times. If you'd like the article, I'd be happy to submit it. Nationwide, train deaths are down 15% except for in California where they're up 15% in the last three years because we're building next to trains, train tracks. The spokesperson for the Federal Railroad Administration says it's not uncommon to see jumps in trespassers casualties shortly after new homes are built next to old tracks. Right now, we're up 50% more miles in trains than a decade ago. Metro is running 500% more trains than they did when they started. There is a small budget for railroad education, but they've proved it's not working well because they've given railroad education to kids and found employing on the tracks that afternoon. This is a big difficulty considering the fire station that's right next to those tracks is going to be decommissioned. If two sets of trains are on those tracks, it can be 10 minutes before that crossing is open. And of course, I'm concerned about the schools also, but I've taken your time. Thank you for it.
Thank you. Thanks for your concise comments. Scott Spencer, on deck, Michael Salvaccio. We have a lot of Salvaccios here.
Hello, I'm Scott Spencer. I live on Lilac Lane. I've been a resident there for about 25 years. I just want to talk very briefly about the precedent that this would set. I have several acres myself. If something like this went through, there would be no reason a guy like me couldn't come to you and say, I'd like to put 24 apartment units on my totally inappropriate area and jam as many people in there as I could, because I was there when you let this guy do it. And that would, I think, reverberate throughout the county. I think it's the wrong message. I'm totally against the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Michael Salvaccio, on deck, David Ferguson.
Hi. Firstly, Ms. Graham neglected, or maybe just forgot to let you know that the area in question is actually zoned rural exclusive, so I just would like to remind everyone of that. In California, the counties have been charged with the very delicate responsibility of overseeing the bulk of the land use planning. To this end, county officials are elected by residents to use this power to improve the quality of life for the people of Ventura County. Time and time again, though, our county officials have displayed perverse willingness to disregard their constituents and turn a blind eye to our most precious concerns. This county has proven itself unwilling to look beyond carefully-doctored and ridiculously-biased reports when making its decisions, which begs the question: If not to look out for the interests of their constituents, but instead to simply rubber stamp every development and encounters, what exactly is this body's purpose, and what are we paying you for? In the course of this effort, we have seen individuals bullied by county employees for stating their views. We have seen people verbally threatened by the various interests involved, and more broadly, we have seen groups of citizens marginalized and repeatedly ignored by those meant to work on our behalf. This is not how democracy is meant to function. In this scenario, it is not merely the right of citizens, but it is our civic duty to work to correct this perversion of government. We have successfully applied to the California State Assembly for a legislative remedy to ensure that this kind of reckless project, and without concern for resident safety, does not repeat itself in this county or in any other. And I guess we could name it either after Judy or Greg, but we're still out on that. And it is our responsibility as well to replace our unresponsive and ineffectual political stewards. We are ready to work towards these ends in appropriate time. However, as California was reminded last year, when the abuses of power are so pronounced and so habitual, we need not wait for an election year to replace our public officials, and if need be, we will not wait, and we are ready to not wait. So, I thank the people of Ventura County for establishing a government. I'm obligated to give me time to speak to you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, David Ferguson, on deck, Kathleen Bartko-Wiak. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is David Ferguson. I don't think there's much difference between me and you. We all appreciate the same things. One of the things that I appreciate most in life is peace and quiet. I live in a rural community. It's quiet at night. I appreciate that. If you live in a place where it's quiet, I'm sure you appreciate that. But I'm not stupid. I'm not blind. I understand progress marches on. You can't expect to live next to, say, 25 acres and expect it to stay undeveloped forever. I'm willing to allow progress as march, but I am not willing to do that at the safety of my neighbors, the safety of my own family. There are not enough roads to accommodate 500 or 400 and some odd cars. There are not enough schools. And with the idea of the fire department moving and the trains, as someone else said, the trains stopping on the tracks, it becomes an issue where you're going to have problems, big problems. I would urge you to reconsider. Do not allow this zoning change to take place. The general plan said, as I recall, that where appropriate, it's okay to do, add these kinds of projects, but they don't say what makes it appropriate. I say, take a look. It's not appropriate. You cannot build 500 units next to a train track with a single road leading in and out. It is not safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Kathleen Bartko-Wiak. Thank you. Followed by Suzanne Ferguson.
I'm Kathy Bartko-Wiak, and I've lived in the Knolls for 25 years, and I have seen all the different changes, and what I appreciate most about our neighborhood is the peace and quiet, and its rural tranquil nature. What I am concerned about most is our parks. We have two wonderful parks in our neighborhood, and you go by any Saturday, Sunday, and there are people there at 6:00 in the morning staking out a spot because these parks are very heavily If we add that much more population, there's going to be no more room in the park for anybody to go and enjoy and play frisbee and fly a kite, or just sit and enjoy the beautiful trees and that peaceful place. And Ms. Nichols, I wanted to say, I really appreciate your trace and order. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Suzanne Ferguson?
I got you, Shirley. Tell that to happen. We appreciate it.
Suzanne Ferguson, and on deck, Ted Neal.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Ferguson. I guess it isn't just the traffic that will be incredibly congested and inconvenient. As people said before, it's the threat of fire that scares me the most, and people have explained about the two trains stopping at our only exit that's close by. I just want to know, does there have to be a tragedy? Does there have- Does there have to be loss of property, of life, of animals, before it becomes important? Before somebody says, "We can't do this. It's not safe"? It wasn't safe before they decided to move the fire station away, before you're going to add all these other people here. It's just asking for disaster. If you go for this, it's just going to be too late. Please consider why you agree to whatever you decide you agree to. You have so many signatures representing so many people in the Knowles and around the Knowles. When is it going to be enough? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ted Neal. And is Ted Neal here? All right. Our next speaker is Chris Dofferty, and then on deck, Bill Say. Are you Chris?
Yeah.
Then Bill Say, are you here? Thank you, sir.
I'm the speaker.
You're the speaker. It's kind of a test that we have here.
Yeah. You know, I'm not much of a public speaker, but I can tell you that, you know, what some guy's looking at, he's in his office in Thousand Oaks, and he's saying, "Well, this'll work." Well, you know, if you live there, you'll know, this will not work. These people, there's no, I mean, it always takes time, you know, to drive through that community. The roads are so narrow there, even if you try to take a back way, you know, which we all have our own little ways of going, I mean, if there's another car coming the other way, you already have to pull over. Somebody has to give way. I couldn't imagine putting another 500 cars in this place. You know, I couldn't imagine. I also noticed that in Lee Colton's presentation, there, you know, he gave you all the statistics for Simi Valley. Simi Valley, this and that. Well, we're talking about Santa Susana Knowles. And if you want to talk about affordable housing, well, you know, I couldn't move to Camarillo, you know? So, you know, I want to implore you to understand that there is affordable housing there. It's not a high-rent district, or housing there is not off the scale as it is in California, you know? So I want to implore you just to consider that there are people that live there.
Thank you for your testimony. Chris Say on deck, Larry Wilkins.
That's Bill Say.
I'm sorry. Bill Say.
It's okay. Yeah, I moved to Simi about 22 years ago. My property directly adjoins the ranch. We bought in Simi because, because it's rural. If we wanted to live in the city, we could go right across the railroad tracks and live in the city. We bought in Simi in the Knowles because it's rural. So the question is, what is the point of zoning laws? If you're just going to throw them out the window and rezone really nearly anytime some big developer with a lot of money comes along, what's the point? Why have zoning laws? We just throw it away. Just say, whoever wants to develop, just come on in, give us your money, and you can develop anything you want. That's why we bought there, every one of us. Everybody here bought there because we like it that way. We don't like streetlights or sidewalks. We don't want them. This is our neighborhood. This is where we live. How would you like it if a big apartment building was built right next to your house? We're 500 people swarming over the park. It's the only spot for your kids to play. It's outrage. It's an outrage. This is not representative government if you go ahead with this. You're ignoring your constituents. That's why we're here today, everybody here, because we don't want this. Implore you to turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Larry Wilken, and next up is Gene Mayle, I believe. M-A-Y-L-E, it looks like.
Good afternoon, staff. I live on the other side of the tracks. My name is Larry Wilken. I am the Secretary of the New Crest Homeowners Association. I'm here representing 88 homes and the owners of those homes that are located on Riverwood Court, Catherine, Mulberry, Tangelo, several other streets in that area. I and the owners of those homes collectively oppose this project for numerous reasons. Many of those reasons have already been stated. I've known the Knowles. The Knowles was the first area that I looked for a home when I moved there 28 years ago. I ended up buying a house on Adam Road that has very much similarities with the Knowles, if you're familiar with Adam Road, which was owned by Ari Agricultural. I don't, you know, putting a high-density apartment building in that area is like putting a gas station in the middle of the Getty Museum. It just doesn't fit. It doesn't fit. It's never going to fit. It won't fit yesterday. It wouldn't have fit 25 years ago, and it's probably, unless you build those that place down, it's not going to fit 25 years from now. What my concern is, and the concern of our homeowners, is the amount of traffic that's going to increase in that area is going to be phenomenal. It definitely is going to be. I mean, there's no two ways about it. If you doubt that, you need to get in your car and drive out there and take a look at those streets out there. The streets are low-maintained. They're very narrow. I participated in the evacuation of his property during that, the fire we had up there, getting the horses out of there. And I can tell you, that's something else people haven't even talked about here. You talk about evacuating the Knowles, talk about evacuating all the livestock that lives in the Knowles also, which we're throwing horse trailers and bigger pieces of equipment, et cetera, into. It's pretty dangerous. The other thing is the schools. You know, the Knowles Elementary is already using portables. How many more portables are we going to build over there? Or is Mr. Lee going to go ahead and pop for a new school? I don't think so. The other thing is, is, you know, I've lived in Simi, like I said, 27 years.
Thank you, sir.
Got the headlight?
Yes, you do. Sorry. Your next speaker is Gene Mayle, followed by Dan O'Dowd, and Supervisor.
Hi, my name is Gene, and I am a really happy newbie of the area, not a newbie. And we moved out of the city to find rural. We're mixing four-legged horses with iron horses. I love in the morning doing my dishes because I watch the rabbits run down the road. When I give directions to my house, I tell them, "Go up by the ranch, and when you get to a road that looks like an alley, that's my street." It's narrower than most alleys in the city. So we do have traffic coming up and down it. We pull over to the side. It's also an area where everybody is looking out for one another, saying hi. How many people can move in and say their neighbors brought them cookies when they came in? I can. It's also stated about the history of our area that goes back to Mortimer Park in the 20s. And it's amazing, the rock formations, they were formed by God. They're beautiful. Have you been out there to see them? Sites that we're lucky we get to see. We also have been entrusted with other historical things, like the Train Depot. I would also think that anybody that's into history, and that is, as I understand, an honorary member of the Historical Society, would have concerns regarding the history of the area. I'd like to say that you've got a lot of people here speaking. I remember back to something quoted, "We, the people," well, we are the people. We're speaking up now. We will continue to speak up. We will not lay down. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this right? Okay, let me see. Alex Danica? No, I think you spoke before. That's a, okay. Gene Maybe? Pardon me? You just finished. Okay. Dan O'Dowd? Is he in the audience? Dan O'Dowd? How about William Reed?
No. No, it's a stack he gave me.
William Reed, and maybe Dan's downstairs will hold his card. And Larry Lapetus would be up next.
My name's William Reed. I've lived in the Knowles for over 30 years, and it just doesn't, does not fit. Does not fit. Have you folks been out there? Has everybody up there been out there? And you know, you know what we're up against. Every time a car comes the other way, you got to pull over, let them by. There's just no way it's going to fit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Larry, and then next up would be...
I just want to repeat most of what everybody else said, but add this, and that is that during the recent fires, we live on Sullivan Drive, which adjoins Catherine Road, actually, many people think it is Catherine Road. And on the current Thomas Brothers map, it shows that that road goes through. And so during the recent fires, all the emergency vehicles were coming through our street thinking that it was a through road until we became proactive and went out there and guided them. With all these new houses and the lack of police services, this has become a nightmare, a nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Malone? How about Dan O'Dowd? How about Shelley Lapetus? And next up would be Barbara Johnson.
Good afternoon. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to exercise my participation in a democratic government. And I want to remind you that I represent 10 more people who are not fortunate enough to be able to take the day off for work, and they feel exactly as I feel. And we are the voters, and I think a lot of people have made the point that we would like a government that works for us. The other thing that I want to mention is, nobody has told you, there are only two sheriffs that we have for law enforcement in our neighborhood because we are an unincorporated part of the city. And so we would be totally unprotected if we suddenly had an influx of 200, 300 people in our neighborhood in apartments needing more services from law enforcement. And the gentleman that made the presentation of the adjacent property, he picked trailers, he picked RVs, he did not show you the homes that are surrounding this property. And he did only mention the development to the south of the tracks, which is a rather dense development compared to the rest of the surrounding neighborhood. So please come look at our neighborhood and see what we're talking about.
Thank you. Barbara Johnson.
I'm a 34-year resident, and I hope you're impressed with the number of people who have come out today, driven more than 40 miles to be here to show their opposition of this project. I wanted to make two quick points. The first is that Supervisor Parks has a proposal before you to require testing of soils and groundwater of any proposed development within two miles of the Santa Susana Field Lab. This is a much-needed step to assure the health of your constituents. It is therefore essential that this proposal be put into effect before any future development in this area is approved. I simply can't imagine that you would consider a zone change to add higher-density development to such a sensitive area. Thank you Supervisor Parks for your very conscientious, rational proposal. The second point, the Knowles is a long-established neighborhood of single-family homes, so I find it unconscionable that staff recommends passage of the zone change that would impact so negatively on all residents of the area. Can you imagine the hullabaloo that would ensue should the city, where apartments are more compatible, change the zoning of, say, Indian Hills to accommodate apartments? People living in such established neighborhoods would lose property values, and I'm sure many lawsuits would result from such a change. The county zoning, as it now stands, would not deny the developer of his rights to build on his property, but it would deny the present residents their established zoning protection, protection guaranteed in your guidelines for orderly development. And I quote, "Urban development should occur whenever practical within incorporated areas." I ask you, would you want to violate the general plan to protect such a project so riddled with problems?
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Please hear and heed, please.
Our next speaker is Barbara Crawford on deck, Robert Stoneham. Barbara Crawford here, and then Robert Stoneham. Are you Robert Stoneham? Go ahead, speak. Barbara Crawford here, going once, twice.
I've been a resident of...
All right, we'll hold it if she shows up. I'm sorry, Mr. Stoneham.
I've been a resident...
And then on deck, Teresa Thompson. Now, I'm sorry. There you go.
Okay, third and final time.
There you go.
I've been a resident of, I guess what's considered that Knowles area since late '81. I was fortunate enough, because I think interest rates were about 16 percent at the time, and there was a Fannie Mae that came up available for 13. So I didn't really know that I was moving into such a special little place. Shortly after I moved in, the first thing that caught my eye, because I grew up in South, what's called South LA, used to be South Central, specifically Watts. I'm 57, so I remember when Watts was a place where you could leave your door open at night, and pretty much the only thing that would happen is there was, you let the cool breeze in. It changed. A lot of what caused it to change is high-density housing. Most of the crime in the Watts area is located in the major projects that surround the community. And of course, that has a lot to do with, you have families, kids become teenagers, they need things to do. And when, by the time serious drugs came into the community, then you started getting guns. And that's when you start getting a tremendous amount of loss of life. Now, the thing that impresses me considerably about Simi is that it is often the safest city in the United States. And that's no mean feat. Sometimes we're number two. But we're a very safe place. But it's very apparent why it is, because you have people who are invested in the community. They care about it. If you go down any of the streets, if you see a home that's unkempt, it usually is because people are either renting there, or the home has been vacant for a little time. But to have a tremendous number of people come in, you're going to have a tremendous number of problems. You're going to get your rent income, but you're also going to get more emergency usage of the, okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
You know where I'm going with this.
I do. Thank you. Even though I interrupted you three times at the start, my apologies. Teresa Thompson, and then on deck, oh, is this Barbara Crawford?
I'm Teresa Thompson.
Okay, yeah, Teresa. Barbara, Barbara Crawford, has she shown up? Great, all right. Barbara's on deck.
Okay. I moved to the Knowles 24 years ago, seen it change. I also spent a career on advertising and marketing with the networks, so I know a spin when something's put on it. A person here is really trying to come off being very altruistic, doing the good, doing benefit for the community, doing the benefit for the whole Ventura County. But what it is, the crisis in housing is really a financial opportunity for his company. Let's call a spade a spade, okay? So we know what we're talking about. I was in the Knowles, I've gone through about four different fires, and last fire in October, I was a small woman. I was out there directing frantic Simi residents when the 118 freeway closed. I was just hoping they wouldn't run over me. But there is a real danger here with the services, the small roads. It is a definite lethal situation. Going back to the spinning of the whole situation, the photos that you showed of the junk, I know that there are places where people use car parts as landscaping, but I don't look out on that. My home is not like that. I have brought my tax dollars to Ventura County for years. I have friends in much higher-rent zip codes who have talked to me about moving into Brentwood or Beverly Hills, but I refuse because I moved there for the rural nature of that community. And that is something that I hope you, as representatives of this community, will listen to us. We're not against development, but not this development, not this particular project in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Barbara Crawford, and on deck, Laurel Piper.
Hi, I live at 670 Catherine Road, and I've lived in the Knowles for 20 years. And unfortunately, I've already decided to leave the Knowles because of the traffic increase, because of the New Crest homeowners' building that's just to the side of the expected one. So that's, that should give you a clue of how it's affecting the residents.
Thank you very much. Laurel Piper on deck, Dr. Kenneth Piper. Either one of them here, Dr. Kenneth Piper? And then on deck, Stephen Finch. I'm sorry, yeah, we just had Laurel.
Laurel Piper passes.
All righty.
I'm Ken Piper with my family, a Santa Susana Knowles resident for 14 years. The Knowles is unlike any other hillside community in Simi Valley. As you can see, we are not a community of rich people trying to keep out poor apartment dwellers. What we are is the most diverse community I've seen anywhere in Ventura County. We encompass the whole range of the social and political spectrum. And yes, we have more than our share of artists and craftspeople who, like us, love the Knowles for that diversity and because it is not like the tracks across the tracks. We don't like sidewalks and city lights. We want to see the stars at night. There are a few large houses on hilltops, but there are also mobile homes and old houses that are not much more than shacks. The houses are built into the rocky hillsides. There are no stair-step cut-and-fill lots, no cookie-cutter tract houses. Such would be incompatible with our... Such would be incompatible with our community. I recently saw a program about the unincorporated community of Casper in Northern California. Using a consensus approach, the townspeople are working with the county to determine their own future. They are not saying no to all development. They realize that property owners have a right to make a fair profit from their property, but they are making sure that the whole community is involved from the start so that everyone can live with the result. That way, everyone comes out a winner. We would like a similar involvement to determine the future of our community. Gary Gorian says he wants to work with us, but his idea of working with us is to let us help him decide what style to build his apartments. His idea of consensus building seems to be to try to influence those adjacent to the development with the prospect of adding square footage to their property in exchange for their support against the community as a whole. We are not saying no to development on the ranch, but we want something that would be a part of our community with people who will not just live next to us, but be our neighbors. We want something with imagination to match our artists. Joseph Sinek can make a fair profit.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir.
The last paragraph is very important, and I have copies.
I'm sorry, if you want to submit it to us, you can do that. We'd be happy to look at that. Stephen Finch, followed by Kathleen Piper. Is Kathleen Piper?
Kathleen Piper.
You pass? Okay. Kathleen, you want to read his last paragraph?
Yes.
There you go. Great. Go ahead. There we go, she put in her thanks. Stephen Finch, followed by Kathleen Piper.
Hi, obviously, my name is Stephen Finch, and I wanted to, I was going to say a few things. Before I say them, I wanted to thank Mr. Gorian for bringing us all together. I've lived there for 17 years, and I never knew we had so many fantastic people. It's quite refreshing. Anyway, I've been in the real estate business for about 20 years, and I can assure you that having an apartment complex of this magnitude built in our neighborhood reflects the most inappropriate and detrimental planning possible. By the county's definition, we are a rural community. With the exception of the regularly overcrowded Little League Field directly across the street and Fire Station Number 43, which, as you already know, will be moving at some point in the future, there are no public facilities of any kind, nor are there any commercial or industrial centers, roadways, with more than one small lane in any direction or even streetlights. There is no infrastructure to support the immediate influx of this many residents to one large pocket of a small community, and there is no way that the developer could possibly mitigate the effects his project would have on the neighborhood. Traffic isn't the only issue. What about utilities, basic services? We're talking about an area that's only had cable television for less than 10 years. Recycling pickup for the last three months. And unfortunately, many of our neighbors are still on septic tanks. As far as the affordable housing is concerned, I have no problem with offering affordable housing to low and very low-income residents, but it doesn't have to take the form of apartments. Houses meet the state's requirements just fine. Requirements by the county, by its own admission, are on track for this time. As far as the, one of the issues that was brought up, which I'm not going to get into, was farming, but there are no farms in our area, so there's no need for farmers. Voting against this request completely supports your planning guidelines. Please support your own past efforts and stop the potential hazard to our neighborhood. Send the developer back to his drawing board and have him comply with your own carefully-thought-out planning requirements. Let Colton Lee Communities meet the current zoning guidelines and build houses that match the neighborhood's ability to handle the additional impact on its resources. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Kathleen Piper, followed by Jim Edwards.
All right, this is Ken Piper's final paragraph. Today, I'm issuing a challenge to you, the Board of Supervisors, and to Mr. Sinek. Let us try for a new kind of community process. Give me 60 days, and I will deliver to you a plan for developing the ranch that can deliver Mr. Sinek a fair return on his investment, is within the existing zoning, and will have the backing of the community. It can be a model for community cooperation that can make Mr. Sinek a hero, not a villain in the community, and it can be an imaginative, state-of-the-art, environmentally-friendly development that can be a model for the future of Ventura County. That's a pretty good promise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim Edwards, followed by Kathy La Force.
I'd like to thank the representatives that had the courtesy to acknowledge my emails. Some of them didn't. People work in my community, I've only been there three months. I moved my entire family out to this wonderful, small, beautiful little place so that my children could walk to school and ride their bicycles to school and go-
the public and the board with an idea of-
Okay, great, you're on deck. Actually, you're on, because I don't see Brenda. And has Donna Williams shown up? Okay.
I live in the Knowles area, and I support what Colton Lee Communities would like to do. I feel for all the young people. I have a young son, that's, he'll be graduating soon and moving on with his life, and I think it'd be a good, a good place for the apartments, and that's it.
Great, thank you very much for your testimony, Anthony. James Trester, on deck, would be Sue Anderson.
Hi, I've lived in Simi since 1972, and I just wanted to say it's hard to argue with emotion, and numbers and everything can be twisted around in any way you want them, but the fact is, is I'm just a working guy, and it's expensive and hard to find a place to live, and where they want to put the apartments and everything, if you drive by there and you see the area, it's, it's something that I think would be good there. It's a good place for it.
Thank you for your testimony. Sue Anderson, on deck, Jean Currie.
Yes, good afternoon, Honorable Board of Supervisors. My name is Sue Anderson. I have lived in Ventura County for 48 years. I have been a broker for 38 years. I'm also a commissioner for the area housing, the area housing of Ventura County. The lack of homes and apartments has caused a crisis here in, in our area, and the crisis is because it affects all segments of Ventura County society. The people that we put our trust in most, like the teachers, the firefighters, police officers, park rangers, the men that pick up the trash, librarians, and many more cannot afford to live here anymore. I understand that there are many large employers that are contemplating in moving from Ventura County because the people can't find a decent place to live, they can't find a place to live, period. The persons that have lived here all their lives and are ready to go out into the world are having an awful, awful time, and they have a rude awakening because they tell me, they go out and look for an apartment, they go out and look for something, anything, a room, and they cannot afford to stay here. Let me see. I'm trying to make this very, very fast. I have a lot more to say, but I will try and make it very fast. The proposal that is before you today attempts to address the problem. Catherine Meadows Apartments is an opportunity to fulfill the real needs of the local residents. That is a huge need for affordable housing.
Ma'am, thank you very much, your time is up.
Is it really?
Yes, it is.
Can I say one more thing?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've treated everybody the same here. Jean Currie, followed by Bob Schwush.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Supervisors. I address you today as a schoolteacher. For quite some time now, I've dreamed about teaching in Simi Valley. I have all the credentials and the degrees and the experience, but it's not a professional impediment that has stopped me. I have looked for two years, and I can't find a home in Simi Valley that I can afford. Catherine Meadows Apartment would be much, would be a much-needed addition to the community, and it would provide housing in Simi Valley to alleviate this problem. I can speak from experience. I know Simi Valley schools have a great reputation for educational services. It makes me believe that the school district is doing a great job, the community is behind its schools, and the teachers are quite happy and content teaching at local campuses. It also makes me wonder how the district can attract quality teachers. Teachers eventually retire, they leave, they pursue other interests, and they must be replaced, hopefully by good teachers. I like to think that I am a good teacher, someone who cares about our children, but how can Simi Valley School District attract the best teachers for local children when it's full of teachers, the hopefuls, that are limited by the cost of housing in town? Catherine Meadows would help address the situation, which would benefit everyone in the entire community, and I'm here today to outline my personal situation and explain that I'm probably not alone. Proposals like this are very much needed to address a pretty big need in any community. Simi Valley will always need quality teachers, and teachers will always need a place to live that's near their work site. Please support the Catherine Meadows Apartment proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Bob Schwush, before you start, has Brenda Castleberry or Donna Williams shown up? I'm assuming they're not here then, thank you. And we'll go on to Bob, followed by, oh, Councilmember Barbara Williams, are you here? I'm sorry, if I would have seen you, I would have called you up at the beginning. I did not realize. No, go ahead. It's our, it's our policy traditionally to call up elected officials first, but you were buried in the, in the cards here. Thank you.
Members of the board, my name is Bob Schwush. I'm a resident of the county for an awful lot of years, more than I care to say at this time. I'm also a former member of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley, and having served on that body for some 15 or 16 years, I can kind of empathize with you and understand some of the things that are going through your mind as you're listening to all of this testimony. I've been there. One of the, one of the goals of the City of Simi, and I think also of the county in the, in the housing plans, is to, to provide a variety of housing, to provide a variety of different styles of housing, and that goes from the estates to the single-family to the condos to the apartments. So when you're looking to have a balance of housing in a community, I think you need to look at everything, and if we take the position that only existing can go next to existing, we will never have any kind of a variety, we'll all have the same. I think this is an opportunity to provide a variety, a different variety, a different style of housing in that area, and having been on a property and viewed it and viewed its location, it's right at the edge, it's not back up inside the mountains or inside the hills of the Knowles, so I think that there are opportunities here to provide this kind of housing, and also to provide the low, very low, low and affordable types of assistance that is really needed, and if it's done right, as it's done in the city and as I'm sure it's done in the county, where you can't tell one house from the other, you don't have to worry about any of the elements that move in, affordable housing is really needed. So I would urge you to very seriously consider this proposal and hope you can find it, to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Councilmember Barbara Williams, followed by Lori Fitch. I believe it's Lori with an L. Lori Fitch, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Member of the Board. My name is Barbara Williamson. I am not here on behalf of Mr. Gorian or of the Knowles. I'm here, I chair the Homeless Committee in the City of Simi Valley, and we do have a need for affordable housing, but more importantly, I think you need to know that the City of Simi Valley, when we look at planning, we look at it 80%, 20%, 80% single-family detached, 20% affordable multifamily housing. We have not reached that criteria as far as the 20% is concerned, so it's important that we continue on that path to meet those goals. The other thing that's really important is, I know the supervisors as well as the people in the audience, as well as the elected officials in Simi Valley all want open space. In fact, we're going to have something on the ballot. If we want to preserve open space, we've got to put housing somewhere, and that housing has got to go on the valley floor. I know this piece of property that is abutting the Knowles. It's not in the Knowles, per se, but it is certainly on the cusp of the Knowles. To take, to go into the Knowles, you go up some windy roads, and it's spread out, and it's a beautiful community, and I won't deny that, and I, and I think that they deserve to have their little piece of heaven. But I also think the firefighters, the teachers, the single-family parents, and homeless people need a piece of that heaven, too. And if we have a developer such as Mr. Gorian come to this board and say they're going to present something, I think we need to have an open mind, and I think we need to all work together to make sure that everybody gets affordable housing or even housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Lori Fitch, is Lori Fitch here? I hope I'm reading this right, I just can't quite read the first letter, but is there any Fitch here? F-I-T-C-H? Okay. Yeah, Tom Hardison? It's Tom Hardison here. And then Carol Paola?
My name is Carol Paola, and I've lived up in the Knowles for the past 10 years, and I enjoy the peace and quiet that I have up there. During the last fire that we had, I was told by a firefighter that if fire got up into Black Canyon, that the fire trucks would not even go up into the canyon because of the dense trees and shrub. If the fire trucks wouldn't go up into Black Canyon, how are people going to get out of Black Canyon if they have to deal with an apartment full of people trying to get out on our exit? One of the prior speakers said that, that the apartments would be, the proposed apartments would be at the edge of the Knowles. Well, that particular edge happens to be our entrance and our exit, and if that gets clogged up, we're in big trouble. I've also waited up to 15 minutes before I had to turn around and take one of the other routes out, the back way, because of the trains sitting there for 15 minutes, and probably longer than that, I don't know how long, I had an appointment and had to get out of there more speedily. There are other areas in Simi Valley that are more appropriate for an apartment due to some of the safety issues that I just covered, and also because of the lack of transportation and public service vehicles. If you have an apartment in there with 500 people, you know you're going to have service vehicles that have to come in and out, emergency vehicles for heart attacks or, or car accidents or whatever, and it's just not appropriate for the Knowles. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Before we call the project proponent back up for rebuttal, I would like to thank the audience in particular, we had a number of young people speaking here, and they were in the minority, and it was difficult for them, and yet I'm sure you made them feel very comfortable, and I really appreciate that. You're now on for two minutes for your rebuttal. That's the end of all of our speakers, and... I just want to clarify with the clerk while you're coming up, we have no, nothing else. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Board. I heard a lot of what I thought were very constructive comments, comments that do need further study if we are to move forward with this project, issues such as traffic, issues such as fire access, things of that nature. I'll just point out again, the property is at the doorstep of the city. This is Catherine Road, it goes to the 118 freeway. It is, it is adjacent to the Knowles, but it is not in the middle of the Knowles. In terms of fire access, I will also tell you that, that I, on my last project, which was located here, a lot of these same people came and spoke against our project, probably 30 or 40 of them, and talked about fire access, fire access, fire access, and I'll tell you that the Knowles was evacuated during the last fire through our brand-new road that is fire access. So I'm certain that we can address those if given, given the chance through a full environmental impact report. The reality of this is, is that it's in an existing community, we have a desperate housing crisis, and there are a lot of people less fortunate than we are that need housing. I don't feel as though I need to defend why I do it, I do it for my own purposes, but there are a lot of people, and we also add that at Parker Ranch, we have 81 units that are designated for low and very low, that start from the low $700 range. So the market rents are very high, that's what we've been saying here. The last thing I will say is, the general plan very clearly says that if an area is all single-family, that you need to introduce multifamily. I think what we've introduced here meets with all of the general plan goals, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any further questions, Supervisor Michaels?
Just a couple. I mean, I have some for staff before we launch. One of the huge concerns, and it was stated by everyone here, it's a concern of mine, it's a concern of the city's, is the at-grade crossing, and, and it is a problem. It's an at-grade crossing onto Catherine, out of the neighborhood, and trains block it, and when we have- it, and when we had, I think the board will remember the discussion that we had when we talked about the relocation of the fire station. And so my question is, if this were to go forward in some form, get through the pre-screening and start moving forward, what are the actual viable exits for this project that could be diverted from and would not impact that at-grade crossing? Are there any? I mean, I know that this is the very early stages, but somebody's got to have a plan.
Fair question, we've done a lot of thinking about that, and we didn't present all the traffic because of where we are in the process, but clearly, the path of least resistance is Catherine to the 118 freeway. As I said before, in the event of the last fire, where people had to get out of the Knolls and the eastern edge was blocked, what they did do is they went out through Oak Knoll Road, out our new road, through Parker Ranch, and then over to Los Angeles Avenue. And then, of course, you can get from, back over to the valley if you head to the east on the other roads out through the Knolls. We would also look at any type of mitigation measures that we may be able to incorporate in there, I don't know what those might be at this point, but I can tell you that our experience is through engineering, a lot of problems can be solved.
That's right. There's only solutions, it depends on money. Basically. The other question is schools. And they're right, there's an awful lot of already portables on Catherine, so have you even initially explored what's going to be not needed to mitigate? I mean, there's a smorgasbord of mitigation. Have you gotten an idea of whether, what would be done, and what would be required of the development?
We haven't outlined an exact path. We would generally meet with the school district, the number of different remedies. Obviously, the first thing that happens is we pay the per-square-foot of school fees to mitigate any impacts. Secondarily, we're open to agreements with the school district to perhaps provide portable classrooms. I know that Simi is in the process right now of redistricting because they do have some schools that are closed down, so they have some capacity available, and I think they're making that available. But, you know, we've been in town for doing this for about 15 years, and we've always been able to work with anybody who is willing to work with us in the past.
Okay. And yes, I know, I know that. I had one more technical question of you all. If I think about it, I'll ask you to open it back up so I can ask the question. It was, I think, important.
Thank you. You have questions for staff now?
I do, but I think others may have questions for...
Any other questions for the project applicant? Supervisor Parks?
As I see the City of Simi Valley, at least our staff has written in saying it's inconsistent with their general plan, and LaFco has said it's inconsistent with the guidelines for orderly development. And as I see, you will need to extend sewer service out there, which would have to be approved by LaFco, but I believe also would require of other people under the curb lines. Have you considered that, and is there other ways for you to get sewer service other than having it extended?
That is a wonderful question. The LaFco memo actually is not completely accurate. The sewer and water are actually right in front of our property and then right next to our property, so I think that was simply an oversight on LaFco's standpoint, and I think Simi Valley's city staff has indicated that there is a sewer in the road right there, so very good point, and we did study that at the outset.
Thank you. And then also, have you talked with the fire department at all about this? Because it does seem like putting that many individuals could cause, will certainly cause a choke point in access and egress out of the Knolls in case of fire.
Again, our understanding of where we are in the process is that this is a screening, and that if we granted the approval to move forward, we would work with every agency that you could possibly think of, including the fire department, and sewer and water, and things of that nature, and we also have a history of working with them, and I think we were very successful in our last project, as you saw how they evacuated this actual community through our actual project, so we have a...
Thank you.
Anyway, that's...
Excuse me, I happen to have that confirmed by the fire chief, so let's not start throwing stuff around, it's been a very civil meeting, no one's had a chance to make any comments, I'm sure some of you didn't go that way, but some people out of the community did, and so keep the emotions down, okay?
Supervisor Parks, other questions?
I have one question for you. Number one, I really, overall, I appreciate a pre-screening process, I think it's just, it's good to get this out in the open and find out whether there are fundamental things. A fundamental issue for me is that high-density urban development needs high service levels, high urban service levels. Cities are designed to provide high service levels, the county unincorporated area is probably the poorest delivery of high urban service levels that I've seen anywhere, and I think that's intentional, and I think people, some people actually live in that unincorporated area. So my question for you, I support high density in these existing urban areas, city areas, where they can provide those services in the right spots. Where are you with the City of Simi Valley in terms of projects of this size and type going within the current city limits? Are there viable options, properties out there that you are in the process of working on that would be more appropriate than going out into the unincorporated area?
That is another fantastic...
And if I could, and the secondary question, that is, City of Simi Valley, consider or not consider annexation of any properties? But go ahead.
I can't speak for whether or not they would consider or wouldn't consider. I can tell you that we have, there are a lot of things that said here that weren't 100% accurate. We have another property that we're working with the city, we were awarded an RFP, and we're doing a mixed-use development on Tapestry, which is in the city floor, and that has 36, 34, 36 affordable senior units. Really, in terms of inventory, the city is just about done, I mean, it's just about built out with viable infill, and I think that's what sort of led us to this piece because it is, in our opinion, as planners, a classic infill with development on most of the sides. And then also, if you go down Catherine, it takes you right to the 118, and there is some shopping and things of that nature right off of Catherine Street, which I think would probably be revitalized with some new blood in there.
Is there, are there any sites that you're aware, that you've been looking at, that are currently developed, but developed at low densities within the City of Simi Valley that could be converted over? I mean, you're seeing some cities taking their city centers and those areas and trying to revitalize them. Are there opportunities like that in Simi Valley that you're aware?
The opportunities are becoming few and far between. I don't have an actual inventory of all the sites, but I can tell you that we don't have a...
Great.
I don't know of another site that's just like this, that is infill and is right next to the city, and that we could get this kind of project units on.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for the project applicant? Seeing now there are questions, you guys can take a seat, and we'll go on to questions for staff. Do we have questions for staff? Supervisor Michaels?
Couple of questions. I guess the first one that I need to ask is, in the pre-screening, if we were to ask for some modifications, conditions, whatever, in moving something forward, would it have to remain substantially the same in order to move forward and start through the process, start the EIR and all of the planning? Or could it change somewhat if this board decides they would move something forward, but not 200 whatever apartments?
Are you asking whether the pre-project description can change before this becomes an actual entitlement application? I would think that...
Or would it have to come back six months from now, I guess is what I'm asking?
I would think that it can, and the reason I would think so, and I'll ask the attorneys to answer this, is because there is no environmental document, and this is a policy arena.
And while you're turning to staff, your boss looks like he wants to jump.
Okay, well, you staff...
Well, the attorneys may want to jump in, but I think as the board has experienced in the pre-screening, the general plan screening certainly that I've seen in the last few years, the board has routinely conditioned them and made adjustments to those project descriptions to carry them forward in the process. So I think the short answer is, yes, you are free to condition those from planning staff's perspective, but I'll certainly defer to council on that.
County council?
I agree with Mr. Stevens, there is no barrier to that. I would note that the staff recommendation is that the density shall not exceed eight dwelling units per acre. If you felt that was too high, you would certainly have the opportunity now to set that at a lower level.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Supervisor Michaels?
No, I was just going to make some comments, that leads me into where I can go or not go in, or getting some comments and moving...
Let me just ask one, as a friend. What is your understanding of the total number of units for the project now?
The request came in at 150 to 250, and dividing that by the number of acres that are available yielded a density at 11 units. It was actually 10.5, and we indicated in the staff report 11 units per acre density. The planning staff was not willing to support that. The applicant indicated that he thought the actual density in the surrounding area was closer to eight. We were not able to verify the study, but he did put something forward that indicated that might potentially be consistent with the actual density in the area. At eight units per acre, the yield would be 189 units.
Okay. Other questions? Supervisor Frank?
Yeah. What is, can you identify your understanding, again, of pre-screening and the purpose of it?
Yes, and I think it was mentioned by Supervisor Bennett a little earlier, the term fatal flaw is often thrown out there, but the pre-screening process is really to give an opportunity for us to look at a project and identify if there are any of those fatal flaws, so to speak, for the project, but also to evaluate it against some of the relatively qualitative criteria that the board has adopted to determine whether or not the proposal has a likelihood of being consistent with a number of our plans and policies. In fact, the language, for example, and I think the one probably most relevant to our discussion today is, one of the findings that the board would use in determining a screening as being consistent is, when the proposed amendment request has a potential for compatibility with existing or planned uses in the area. So the board adopted guidelines that we use are, there's a lot of gray, we might say, within those, and so staff has to take a look at those and evaluate the project and make a recommendation to you, and ultimately, the board has to take a look at that project, and at this phase, clearly by the discussion, we have a pretty raw project description, but in essence, that is because the board is taking a look at that and making the decision whether or not the applicant should invest the time and resources, and whether or not the community should invest the time and resources in evaluating this further in the process.
It seems like a reasonable policy to me, for the board to do this. If I could make, do you have comments you're going to make?
I have a question for staff.
One more question for staff? Go ahead.
Supervisor, how do you foresee, how can it be accomplished to actually get affordable units? The City of Thousand Oaks, I can think of multiple instances where developers have promised, development agreements were changed, and then the all-senior and affordable housing was eliminated out of Dos Fiantos, 350 units. We had a Chappelle apartment building that was supposed to put 15% aside for affordable units, and then they never did it. I just, how do you see that actually happening? And for how long of a period of time?
The way that would be achieved, and it is one of the conditions of approval, is that there would be a development agreement to indicate 20% lower-income housing. The applicant offered a combination of very low and low-income housing. The project would return to you as an entitlement project, and you would have the opportunity to verify it at that time.
And that's exactly what happened in Dos Fiantos with Chuck Cohen, and the same person that's worked with this, that they, future city councils just came and wiped it out, so a development agreement can be changed also, so that gives me concern. Can it be deed restricted perhaps, or is that something else that can be removed with a vote of three members?
Oh, yeah, it can be. We do it, did it in Simi.
Yeah. I'm just looking at something that can't be changed later.
Supervisor Parks raises some very good questions, and I think as you recall, some of the recent screenings we've done have had similar conditions related to that type of housing. We have yet to have any of these applicants get far enough in the process for us to work the details of that through. Obviously, kind of council would be deeply involved in whatever agreements, whether it be a deed restriction, a development agreement, or whatever the mechanism might be. Unfortunately, we just don't have extensive experience with that, for me to answer for you how we've done it in the past.
For example, if they were handed over to an area housing authority, or many mansions, or some, you know, affordable housing project, they actually get the units, that might be a way, because then that's what their mission is, as long as they're around. I'm just looking at a more permanent mechanism if this does fly. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Then we're going to go to comments.
Let John go ahead. I'll back clean up.
All right.
Well, I want to commend the audience here today for the testimony that you've given. I think it's the most creative testimony I've heard. It was humorous, and you were allowed to laugh, I'm happy for that. I live, and my district is in, Oxnard. If you travel through Oxnard, you're going to find many families living together, in some cases 14 or 15 people, where the density is really high. We're trying to find space in Ventura County, land in Ventura County, to house people who are on low income, and also to house people who are farmworkers. Now, farmworkers don't make enough money to buy a home at the median price today, but if we're going to preserve agriculture in Ventura County, then we're going to have to provide the infrastructure, which means farmworker housing, at least that's my definition of one part of the infrastructure that's needed. And so we in the western part of the county, if you will, at least I have been, and there's a whole committee looking at this, are trying to find land that will accommodate farmworker housing and land that will accommodate low-income housing. And we have a piece in Oxnard outside of the city limits right now, but it looks like it has promise. Remember this, in Ventura County, you have anywhere from 5,000 to 20,000 agricultural workers at any one time. And if you go through parts of Ventura County, and I'd be happy to take you through them, you will find where people are living in housing that you would identify as subnormal, as housing that isn't fitting for a human being to live in. So we have that huge social problem. And then we have a value problem, and you represent a value, and I understand your values. I really understand your values. And you want to maintain the kind of community that we have, that you have. But as we go on with the preservation of agriculture, preservation of open space, this equates into higher density and housing, and it's just a change that we have to try to work with. Now, I've talked with a developer, and he seems to me to be a sensitive human being. Unlike many developers that I've seen in my 28 years on this board, he seems sensitive. And what we have here is to go through the process, and for him and you to try to work out something that may reduce your dissatisfaction, you may not be satisfied totally, but reduce the strong dissatisfactions that you have. So I hope we would give this a try, and that's what the pre-screening is, and see if we can work out the details. And I know other board members want to speak, but I would be willing to make a motion on that. that.
On behalf of the speaker, the, as I said, the county unincorporated area has a great deal of difficulty providing good urban services and comprehensive urban services. The higher the density, the more imperative that's the case. I would also offer that we in Ventura County are going through a paradigm shift that's unlike any other county in Southern California. We are the only county that has really taken effective efforts to stop urban sprawl, the only county that is really, has a fighting chance at preserving the open space buffers between our cities. For that to work, we will have to have higher density, and I am very supportive of higher density in the appropriate places. But those appropriate places are in cities that are designed to provide high quality, high intensive urban services, not in the unincorporated area. This project is fairly flawed because it would do, I think, these kinds of projects would do great harm to trying to convince the citizens of Ventura County that they ought to accept high density. Because the higher the density, the more important that you do it right. And if you do high density and it's not done right, and when I say not done right, I don't just mean whether the developer builds it properly, but whether you service it properly, whether you provide all of the urban service. If you don't do it right, that project will be pointed to by everybody in Ventura County inside cities to try to block every city high-density project that's going to come. And that's what's wrong with this project in my mind, serious enough, that this is not where I would want to go with high-density projects. And so, I would not support moving forward. I think the pre-screening place has been an ideal place for us to err and get these things done at a level that has not been too expensive for the project developer yet, is a level that lets the community express themselves early and lets the supervisors get their views out early also.
Please, no applauding. The supervisors are bigger, they can take it more, but still, we're trying to be consistent here. I see any lights? I see both lights. Who went first? Do you guys know?
I don't know.
Supervisor Long.
Well, I appreciate those comments, and I appreciate all of the comments today. As you can hear from both public members who've spoken and board members, we're in a tough, tough position in this county at this point because we have escalating housing costs, and we have great needs, and we have great needs in all communities. As the Paiwu community today spoke, and the Paiwu community is stepping up to the plate and saying, you know, we know that Paiwu has been a community that has frankly been the affordable housing piece for Ventura County and for the farming community for years, and they would like to see some higher-end housing come in, and they would like to see some other values come in, in the sense of parks and services. It too is an area that we have great difficulty in providing those municipal services in an unincorporated area. It's truly unique in that it's, you know, fifteen miles from the next largest city, which is Fillmore, and even further down the road on the 126 from Santa Paula and any other larger, large urban areas. But this, in my mind, gets still to the basic core challenge we have, and that is housing in this county. And I think if we don't, as a community, work together on the solutions for that housing, then it will continue to be a battlefront, and it will continue to cause, I think, either the challenges for our young people who will leave because they'll be forced out, and/or the challenges of overcrowding, and the social conditions that come with that, and the ripple effect from all of that. I think that the screening process allows for greater community work to be done. And I think the challenge that was offered by the one speaker, Mr. Alkins, was it? I'll find it here. Anyway-
Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. That challenge should be taken up, because I think that there is a lot of work to be done to make this fulfill both the goals of the community, the wishes of the community, and the goals in the area. I will be hard-pressed to support this coming back if it doesn't have significant work done on the whole access issues and safety issues of Catherine Road and fire safety and that crossing. And I think that I would also be looking for issues related to how we can address some of the municipal service needs, and that probably will be a harder one, frankly, to address. At least in proximity to the city limits of Simi Valley, it isn't like a Paiwu that is fifteen miles outside of even the closest contract services. So, I think it has a lot of work, you have a lot of challenges, but the biggest challenge is, and it is, that you must work with every one of these folks in this room, and the sooner the better, to look at the density issue, and eight DUs per acre may be too much. And I think the design of it is as important for both the safety of the existing community, but also of the folks who may reside in those homes at some point. So, I would be looking for a lot of good work to be done on that and to, again, look at that density issue even stronger. I don't see it fitting at its current proposal, and this is just a broad brush. I don't see it fitting in there. And it would be, I encourage you to do a lot of additional work with the community. But for the screening process itself, I think just because of the housing needs we have in this county, we must take a look at it.
Supervisor Parks.
Yeah, I think the project is clearly inconsistent, and we have a guideline for denying a general plan amendment request, and that is if the land use designation is, and the density or land uses are inconsistent with the surrounding properties. And if one gentleman said, you know, can I bring my horse or my peacock there, you know, obviously, it isn't consistent with the surrounding property. And the land that does surround it is really unique, and it's almost like you need to be able to preserve those areas. And this is something that is clearly sprawl. I think it's incompatible, I think it's inappropriate, I think it's spot zoning. There was discussion about, you know, making up for the loss of Amundson. I think of Amundson as a gain. The loss was, was when the Board of Supervisors chose to change it from open space to a city. Now, that, to me, was a mistake, as this would be a mistake also. And then also, besides the land use aspect of it, from a county perspective, I feel like, you know, it's the kid in the candy shop, you know, you really want to buy something big. We all want to see affordable housing, but we can't afford in terms of fire access and choking points. We can't afford in terms of law enforcement. I mean, we are now stretching our sheriff's department so much, and it's true, and it is a fact, that high density does have more calls than single-family. I don't think we can afford to stretch our law enforcement. And I also think this is precedent-setting. You've heard testimony today, people saying, well, I've got a lot of acreage, can I then make mine into apartments? So, where do you draw the line? And I say the line has already been drawn. Everett Malay said it clearly, the executive director of LAFCO. This is clearly urban, and this area here is a rural area. So, it's just completely incompatible, and I think it's very straightforward in denying the request because it is inconsistent. And as LAFCO would say, this should be part of a city, not something in an unincorporated county.
If I could, my, I just want to add one other comment to my comments, and that is that it's even more compelling to me that it's not the case because it is right by the city that could provide those urban services. So, here we're doing, we're doing sort of the complete reverse of the guidelines for the development, and we're not even saying, well, it's because it's so far from the city, it'll never be, it could be part of a city, it's not. And so, that's one more compelling reason why I think we shouldn't do it. But, be that as it may, I think we have, Supervisor Michaels, your light is on. You wanted to hit the cleanup anyway.
I'm batting cleanup. First of all, the reason that I asked, I am going to conditionally see this move forward, but not, A, at the density that is suggested, and B, there may be a different housing type that would be more appropriate. Clearly, two hundred, two hundred and fifty apartments is not appropriate there. Low density, on the other hand, may not either be appropriate on that twenty-three acre piece of property. By low density, I mean a full acre. One of the things that we need to take into consideration is that, you know, the location, and I know the Knowles people don't agree with this, but a considerable portion of the Knowles could be considered high density. Some of those lots are so small that you have to build three stories up in order to meet the setbacks. And so, by government definition, it could be considered high density. That's just nearly the square footage on the ground. The quality of the neighborhood, the uniqueness of the neighborhood, if I might quote from another public hearing, the quirkiness of the neighborhood, one of your residents preferred to be called quirky as a neighborhood, is all, are all very valid points. I don't believe apartments fit there. However, given the situation of land for housing and trying to get at least a reasonable coverage of housing so that there can be an affordable component, it should be denser than one house per acre. So, in my mind, in trying to get there, meet the needs of the community, but also meet these county needs, I believe that the work has to be done to bring back a substantially different project. However, not, you know, I'm not heading these people down the road, at least my vote, to one-acre, single-story, single-family homes. It's not practical, it doesn't make sense in that area, the density is a lot higher, the legal density is a lot higher than that. I would like for it to be as compatible as possible with the neighborhood. Certainly, everyone would love to see a cleanup effort and then just make the ranch apart. That's not going to happen either. Big, big concerns, and that will be number one on my list, if this even makes it back, it may become just, you know, undoable, is circulation. The circulation pattern has to be accounted for, and it cannot require or encourage anybody to go up through Black Canyon, those kinds. That's going to happen, you know, traffic is like water. It'll find its own way, the neighbors admit they know all the backways too. But I believe it can be designed in such a way to encourage a different circulation pattern that will avoid some of the worst scenarios that have been put forth here. The at-grade crossing is a considerable roadblock to this project, but to any project and to the neighbors who already live there. Can we come up with a different circulation pattern that makes that not the only way to go? If you look at it that way, it could be beneficial in its design to the rest of the community and not harmful. So, you know, and the fire access and the public safety, the sheriff issues, those are important, they're an important part of the design. They are not such a biggie to me because I believe the fire department will condition the heck out of this, they always do. You know, that issue can be dealt with. As we said, there are constraints and there are solutions. It depends on how much money there is. And so, as this project moves forward, the developer will make the decision, is it still a viable project? Because they're not going to get that density, and they are going to have to address these concerns. I would hope, and I see all of the recall, little stickers out there, believe me, they didn't go unnoticed, I don't like to be threatened. I do the very best job up here that I can possibly do in balancing everyone. I respond to those people who give me opinions respectfully. I do not respond to threats. I do not respond to innuendo and nastiness, insibility, if you will. I responded to a lot of people. Some, I read every email, some just got dumped. And so, I want you to know that I do believe this project can be compatible, and I would hope that the community will willingly work and that the developer will willingly work to see where this can get. I will guarantee you, if those three important questions are not properly answered when this comes back, it's DOA, at least in my vote. So, with those comments, I would support Supervisor Flynn's motion. I think that this is what the pre-screening process is all about, and I think that it has a chance. It can be compatible, not at the original proposal, but it will also be very, very closely looked at when it does return to this board.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there objections to the motion? Aye. So, two objections. The motion passes three to two with Supervisors Park and Bennett and objections, Supervisors Flynn, Long, and Michaels in support. Is that clear for the record for the clerk? Anything else? We're done, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. Good luck driving home.